Good evening, everyone. We're going to call to order the December 4th, 2017 Planning Commission meeting. Ms. G., can you please take the role?
Yes. Mr. John?
Present.
Ms. Hockenberry?
Here.
Mr. Krasner?
Here.
Mr. Rankin?
Here.
Mr. Stevens?
Here.
Ms. Teetz?
Here.
And Mr. Budziska?
Here.
Thank you.
Full house tonight. All right. Can I get a motion to adopt the agenda?
So moved.
A second? All right. Terrific. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. All right. So, the next step on the agenda is receipt of petitions. We have a bunch of people here this evening, so this is how this works. If you are speaking on something that is on the agenda, then we'll take public comment at that time. If you are going to be speaking on a topic not on the agenda, in this case Broad and Washington is not on the agenda, it's a work session. So we are going to take public comment on that first. Many of you here have given us the speaker slip, and I'll call the ones that indicated here that that's the topic they want to talk about. There's one or two that have no subject, it appears, and so when I'm done, if I have not called your name and you want to speak on Broad and Washington, just let me know. If there's anyone here who has not filled out a speaker slip but would like to speak, now's the time. I think they're in the back, in the lobby. And we're pretty loose here. If you change your mind, you can get it midway, midstream here. And then we're going to move on to the 900 Lincoln Avenue subdivision, which there's, I think, one at least here on that. And then, we are going to defer action on 116 East Jefferson Street. However, we are going to take public comment because it was advertised as such, and I think I saw at least one here on that. So, a lot of public comment up front in sort of out of order sequence. All right. So, here comes another one. Broad and Washington. All right. So, the first one I got for Broad and Washington is John Coleman. And if you can limit to everybody, state your name and address, and then limit your comments to three minutes, that would be greatly appreciated.
My name is John Coleman. I live at 214 Lawton Street. I would like to make very brief remarks on this application with... Oops, sorry. Thank you. Is before the Planning Commission for comments back to the City Council, and the applicant is seeking, obviously, zoning changes of two lots, a commercial lot and a transitional lot, and is seeking a special exception for residential use and additional heights. And I would suggest to the Planning Commission that more needs to be done in order to justify the granting of these zoning changes and the special exception requests. I'm concerned about the height of the building and the building mass, particularly along Lawton Street. While changes have been made along the back of the property bordering 107 Lawton Street, additional changes in height should be required along Lawton Street as the property moves towards Broad Street. During the process, there's been several plans, several different iterations of plans, and while, as I say again, they've dropped some height in the back, they've increased height in the front, particularly along Lawton Street. The, there's a current transition lot that is, in a sense, acts as a buffer to the residential neighborhood, but I think the height along Lawton Street should be compatible with the residential neighborhood, and I ask that you give that consideration, and please look at that. The current transitional lot, I recognize, is by and large a paved parking lot, but it has, in essence, provided some sort of transition or some buffer to the properties that are on the residential side of Lawton Street. I would ask that the Planning Commission, since they're going to take that transition lot and build on it, I would ask that the Planning Commission seek additional green space and public use as part of this process. The proposed Pocket Park includes a rather narrow sidewalk that seems to end at the city parking lot. Can this Pocket Park continue along the back of the development throughout to Washington Street? I'm not sure, but please look at that. And can the walkway be widened to be a bit, accommodate more individuals walking back there? I'm concerned about the impact of this project, both during construction and after construction, will have on traffic and parking along Lawton Street. As many of you know, if you've been in there, Lawton Street's not a straight street. There's a curve that starts basically at the end of the property in question, and about three or four houses out, it straightens out. But it's a pretty good curve, and you can't really see up the street until you get around that curve. Their sidewalks are not down both sides. There's sidewalk on the property that they're talking about developing, but it ends at 107. On the other side, there's a sidewalk on the even side that goes all the way down to about where the park starts, it ends. Then you have to cross the street, and the sidewalk continues on that other side. I go every morning, take the dog out for walks around the park. I see cut-through traffic now, trying to avoid the traffic lights at Broad and along, you know, by the State Theater, coming down Lawton Street to get down Lee Highway. I envision that to get worse as construction starts. There's school bus stops along Lawton Street. Younger kids play their soccer at the park, so I think traffic, the amount of traffic, the cut-through traffic is going to be an issue. I see that there's a monetary payment provision in the voluntary concessions. I believe it's item 15 for traffic calming and a parking permit system, but I have no clue whether that's a sufficient amount, and I look to you people on the Planning Commission for guidance on that and to please take a look at that. The final point I would just make is somewhere along the line, I heard the idea of narrowing the lanes on Route 7 to accommodate a wider sidewalk along Broad Street so that the restaurants and others can have more space. And I don't see it in the paperwork, and I'm not sure where I heard of it along the way, but that just seems to me to be backwards. If we need a wider sidewalk, we should be moving the setback of the building back rather than narrowing the lanes of the street. Thank you for your time on this.
Thank you very much. The next slip I have is Hillary Duke.
I live at 303 Sycamore Street. So, I'm here to speak about the Broad and Washington project, but also about the Sycamore Street subdivision that was approved back in January. So, first, I'd like to thank you for your service. I know that you put a lot of time and effort into the work that you do, and I do appreciate that. I know that it's volunteer work. The function of the Planning Commission is extremely important, and everything that happened on Sycamore Street is an example of that. Your decisions change the way our neighborhoods look and affect the way that we live. You're really the voice of the citizens, and so this project at Broad and Washington affects more than just the Lawton neighbors who are here speaking tonight. It affects a lot of people in Falls Church City. And I personally, I'm not against development, but I do have concerns. I was hoping to hear more of their comments, but just some of what was already spoken about, the increased density, the lack of green space and public use, those are things that should concern all of us. And so I would just ask that you listen to their specific comments. They're the people in the area that know the best. So, if you remember from January, the lot line adjustment that was approved, all of my neighbors came out to argue it, against it. We also argued against the sidewalks. And you did listen to us about the sidewalks, and I appreciate that, I really do. At that meeting, though, I did feel that some of you really only listened to the advice that you get from the zoning office and the city attorney. I think that it's probably safer to do that. I didn't feel that everybody really listened to what the neighbors had to say. You had made your minds up before you got there. We need checks and balances. We have to make sure that the development in the city is well thought out, that it's transparent, and that our ordinances are followed. So please question the information that you're given by the city. Take the time to review it and make sure that it's accurate, and that it's not just representing the interests of the builders. My experience is that the final plat that you approved for Sycamore Street did not comply with the ordinance. The information I handed out has the page from the ordinance in it. A final plat is required to show a boundary survey before building, and when I asked the city staff about that, later on, when it was too late to appeal it, I was told that it substantially complied, and that nothing could be done. Substantial compliance isn't enough. A document either complies with the ordinance, or it doesn't. The ordinance says "shall show." And while it may seem like a small thing to you, a boundary survey would have shown the builder where the lot line was between our property and the builder's property, and the builder would not have encroached on our property. The lack of the boundary survey cost my family thousands of dollars, so I'm angry about that. I've given you a page from the article that my husband and I posted on Falls Church Facts today with recommendations, but my biggest recommendation is for you to not take this, everything the zoning office gives you or tells you at face value. Your job isn't to rubber stamp. Otherwise, we wouldn't need a planning commission. Why spend the time or money? Listen to the information. Ask the people who live in the neighborhood why they're here, what their concerns are, what you can do to make it better, what you can make sure, what you can do to make sure the city is accountable. There's no need to rush to decisions, and what I heard here tonight, just so far from the person who spoke and from comments I've seen, is that more needs to be done before this exception is granted. So please take the time and look at everything before you decide. Thank you.
Thank you. We will definitely take the time. Amanda Hennebers? I apologize if I got that wrong. Oh, Henneberg. It looks like an asterisk.
Yes. Amanda Henneberg. I live at 2801 Flagmaker Drive.
I'm sorry. Would you repeat the address?
2801 Flagmaker Drive.
Thank you.
Mm-hmm. As a lifelong resident of Falls Church, I'm here to express my opposition to the latest submission of the Broad and Washington project. Unfortunately, this project is more of the same fiscal irresponsibility that has marred our little city for the last several years. A huge mixed-use development project that adds to our overall population, student population, traffic, and drains our infrastructure with minimal revenue back to the city. This equation has not worked in the past, and it will not work in the future. We know this because the facts prove it to be true, and we are, when we currently find ourselves in a budget and infrastructure crisis, where citizens are left footing the bill with soaring tax hikes for previous development disasters. It's time we get off this merry-go-round and stop making the exact same mistakes over and over again, and this project is the perfect opportunity to change course. We could change course by keeping the area as it was initially intended to be: high-density commercial only. We all know and have lived through being burned by the addition of hundreds of apartments, and I would echo the concerns that others have made before, that the apartments remain a large problem with this project. Add to that the height of the structure, the lack of green space, the overall design that does not match the feel of the city, and the traffic and parking impact. Up until now, many of these issues have not been resolved in a satisfactory way, which leaves us all wondering: why do our elected officials and representatives like yourselves continue to approve projects with marginal financial value that adversely impact our neighbors and our city? The only logical conclusion is that priorities lie, not with the people who actually live here, but with the outside interests who are looking to transform the city into something that it's not. Approving and leaving this project as-is would serve to solidify that sad and disappointing fact. So it's my hope that the Commission will keep all of these points in mind as they go through their work session this evening, and unlike with previous projects, actually put the interests of the citizens above those of the developer. Thank you.
Thank you. Diane Dugan.
I'm Diane Dugan.
Dugan.
102 Lawton Street. I continue to have concerns about the Broad and Washington project for the overall city of Falls Church, and am not convinced it's the best approach for this valuable intersection. In fact, the City Council has many open issues with this project, including not knowing what we're really getting. I've heard that several times. What are we really getting? Yet they are moving it forward to first reading, hoping that the boards and commissions can help alleviate some of their concerns. This move just gives the developers the upper hand, and the bigger concern is it sounds like they are doing it not because it stands on its own, but I actually heard them say that it needs to cover the costs of the new school. That doesn't make sense to me. You don't approve a project to cover costs of another project. At the City Council meeting in July, they listed 17 issues, and most of those are still open. A few of the major ones that are still open are: we don't know what businesses will go there to earn the revenues for the city, since there are no formal commercial commitments. It's great that we have creative cauldron in going in there, but that's not going to generate any fiscal benefits for the city, and we don't need any more empty retail establishments, especially in the center of the city. These buildings would cover two football fields' worth of concrete, and it would orphan the municipal parking lot by reducing entrances from four on Broad and Washington Streets to just one. It would overburden the city schools and the infrastructure with nearly more, nearly 300 more apartments instead of the high-density commercial intended for this area. I urge you, as the others have, to gain a better understanding of what we are really getting that is exemplary and justify zoning changes besides 295 apartments in a large office building. Thank you.
Linda Zemke.
My name is Linda Zemke, and my husband and I own the property at 201 East Broad Street, which is on the corner of Broad and Lawton, right across the street from the proposed building. We agree with comments made earlier by John Coleman, and wanted to emphasize our concerns on the project, which is mainly concerning the height of the building along the lower end of Broad Street, uh, Lawton Street. The proposed 65 to 75-foot heights of the insight building across from our house clearly do not meet the special exceptions requirements for the structure to taper to 35 feet adjacent to neighborhood homes. In addition, this project would transform space that's clearly designed to be a transition to the neighborhood into high-density business use. Moreover, and personally, our two-story colonial will be dwarfed in size next to the proposed mammoth buildings of this project. The break in continuity of the residential homes along Broad Street will be dramatic. The curb appeal of our house will be negatively impacted along with the market value of our house. So please consider the height issues of this project when you make your considerations. Thank you very much.
Sandy Tarpinian.
My name is Sandy Tarpinian, and I live at 105 Great Falls Street, right around the corner from the Broad and Washington. And, you know, although I, like the people that live on Lawton Street, are not going to be directly affected by the enormity of this building, I have a lot of the same concerns that some of those neighbors have and that other people have expressed, and I'll just highlight those. Even though it may sound like I'm repeating what's already been said, I think the more that you know that these are real concerns, the more that you might consider them. First of all, the number of apartments is enormous. I'm especially still concerned that we have two-bedroom-with-den-type apartments that can still attract young families and can easily be used as an entry into our school I am also, maybe on a more personal note, hoping all the time that sometime I'm going to see an affordable, one-bedroom-with-den condo, that someone in my age bracket, who's retired now, who doesn't have kids in the school anymore, but certainly will still pay for those schools because I benefited from them. I have no options. I either leave, or I stay where, you know, where I'm currently living. And I would love to downsize, but I don't have that option, and I don't want to go into an apartment. And I think there are lots of people like me. So, why we can't, with some of our projects, incorporate that kind of a housing option, I don't know why we can't do that. Secondly, I'm really concerned about the traffic. When I look in the morning at how backed up Lee Highway is, all the way back to Great Falls Street, it takes you 20 minutes to get to Route 66 in the morning. What are 200 or 300 more cars going to do to that? And we also don't know what these changes on I-66 are going to mean, because now you've got lots more people who, if they're willing to pay, can access I-66 during rush hour. So, maybe we need, once that's incorporated particularly, to have a really good traffic survey done, to see what is this going to mean about tying up our major intersection in the town. I'm a little concerned, not a little, I'm very concerned that there are no retail commitments, that we would be approving such a building without, and not just, not just retail commitment, but good retail commitment. Things that are creative, things that are interesting, things that are different. We don't need another nail salon. We don't need another yogurt store. We don't need another pizza parlor. We need good stuff that isn't already here. So maybe some work on the part of the developer needs to take place there. And then, again, in a very personal way, I, as many of you who work, who know me and work with me, know that I have real environmental concerns in the community, and we've worked hard to make Falls Church a wildlife habitat community, a tree city. It's part of our DNA, and I don't see one thing with this building that reflects that at all. So I think that they need to get more creative, they need to get more inspired about how to incorporate a little bit more green space into the project, to make it look a little bit more interesting than just a cement box. And I certainly hope that we're requiring native plants and trees in anything that they put there. Thank you very much.
Mary Chavez. This is the last speaker slip I have on Broad and Washington. I've seen several people enter since we started this process. After Mary goes, I'm going to close the public comment on this topic. So if you want to speak, please go fill out a speaker slip, and we'll hold it open for you for a few more minutes.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, members of the Planning Commission. My name is Mary Chavez. I live at 215 Lawton Street. While I live on Lawton Street, I speak on behalf of some 45 citizens who reside on Lawton, Columbia, Cherry, Midvale, East Broad, Great Falls, West Broad, Lincoln, Shadow Walk, North Oak, Rosemary, Seton, and other streets in the city of Falls Church. We have written numerous letters to City Council and had repeated discussions with the developers over the past two years. In July, City Council raised 17 items that they wanted addressed, yet only two or three have been. Nevertheless, substantial concerns remain that should be addressed, including those on the City Council's list. The developers request a land use change from business and transitional property to mixed use, a rezoning of the T1 property to B2, a special exception for residential use, and additional height. These require a change in the comprehensive plan and an exemplary use of the property to justify the special exception. We join those on City Council who are concerned that the current proposal has not yet crossed that threshold of exemplary use. More needs to be done, especially, and I'll number them. One, better assure the certainty of sufficient net fiscal revenues for a project of this size on a corner historically designated for high-density commercial use. Two, bring the height of the apartment structure to a level compatible with the adjacent residential neighborhood on Lower Lawton, as required in the special exception and negotiated for the Founder's Row for homes across Park Avenue. Three, enhance the environmental impact of the project through lead gold and significant open space. Provide funds to replace the nearly 80 trees that will be eliminated, and enhance the green landscaping and neighborhood screening of the building. Four, improve the architectural design and look of the project. And five, minimize traffic and parking overflow impacts. The Planning Commission holds a special responsibility to safeguard the emphasis in the comprehensive plan, the city's vision statement, and the downtown Falls Church Small Area Plan on setbacks and design that seamlessly merge with and enhance nearby residential and historic properties, and protect them from negative impacts of noise, traffic, light, odors, and visual incompatibility. I quote from the vision statement. The burden is placed on the applicant to provide sound evidence that the proposed land use will be more beneficial to citizens and the environment than that designated within the comprehensive plan. We ask the Commission to require that the reduced heights in the northeast corner, additional height reductions in Lower Lawton, and the designated setbacks be included in the voluntary concessions to assure that the development will conform to standards stated in approved planning documents, such as the comprehensive plan, the vision statement, and the small area plan. I thank you for your attention.
Thank you very much. Mr. Cash, are you speaking on Broad and Washington, or are you just in general on this other topic?
It would be in general, but I'll give you one second.
Okay. Just give me one second. So, thank you, everybody. We have a work session after this meeting adjourns. This is not, I don't think, a particularly long meeting, so you're certainly welcome to stay around and listen to that work session. If not, it is available online, live streaming, and you will greatly increase our ratings this evening if you watch it. And it's always, it's always available after, not just live, but you can watch it after we're concluded at any point at your leisure. But, so, I think, to be fair, it's probably 45 minutes to an hour away, so you're welcome to stay and then listen. We're going to, applicant's going to come up, and we're going to just talk. We don't take public comment during that time, but this will be back on our agenda, I suspect, several times before going to vote. So you'll have other opportunities to have follow-up questions, and we can address some of your comments at that point. So, just want to let you know what's coming this evening. So, Mr. Cash, why don't you speak to us generally about this? And again, if anyone else wants to talk about this after Mr. Cash, now's the time again.
Good evening. Thomas Cash, 301 West Broad Street. I'm here speaking on behalf of the Environmental Sustainability Council. I'd like to thank the council for listening to me this evening. I know you all are friends, but I'd like to bring something to your attention. With the recent passing of the school bond referendum, the city has adopted a LEED gold standard for all quotes that are to be put forward, and for all developers that are being looked at in that project to have experience in LEED gold. I would like for the Planning Commission to take an eye and take that leadership step, and expect the same out of further developments that are here in the city of Falls Church. I believe any large enough property that is going to be developed in this city that is asking for a special exception should be expected to come to LEED gold or the equivalent. I know there are multiple standards. Also, as LEED is a multiple-choice method to achieve the standard, we can also help mitigate some of our carbon footprint and some of our traffic issues and head other goals going forward in the city. One such program that the ESC recently learned about was on Friday, we were in contact with Tesla Motors. They have a destination charging system in which they will give free equipment and subsidize part of the installation. As well as today, there was a event with delegate sign- As well as today, there was an event with Delegate Simon, who was with EV Go. They will actually come in and pay for the electricity as long as you give them space for a certain amount of time. This is for Level 2 and Level 3 commercial charging equipment. So this is something that's available to not only private sector but also public sector builds here in the city, so it would be available to them. As always, the ESC is available to the council to answer any questions and make any introductions required by any of our future developers. So, thank you very much for your time and have a great evening.
All right. Thank you very much. Okay, I'm closing this, the public comment and receipt of petitions right now, and we're going to move on to new business. The first item is 900 Lincoln Avenue subdivision.
Mr. Chairman and fellow commissioners, you have before you the subdivision plan for 900 Lincoln Avenue, which is at the end of North Spring Street and a few houses down from Northwest Street on Lincoln Avenue. So the applicant, Mr. Bob Bennington here, and his surveyor, Abashro Hani, who could not make it tonight, but Bob is representing the project, is asking that the Planning Commission approve the subdivision and creation of an additional buildable lot where his lot is located. He now owns 900 Lincoln Avenue, wants to build his permanent house there and then have the option of building behind the house. So we, you have your staff report in front of you, and a couple things I would bring to your attention is that the arborist is reserving the right to deal with the plan to save trees at the point of grading plan. Same thing with the improvements, sidewalk, road, whatever, public improvements. Even though the staff is not asking for any construction at this point, they're going to take that up at grading plan. And finally, the fire hydrant needs to be moved per the request by Fairfax County Water. And you have a note, number four, on your subdivision plan that, where they've committed to move the fire hydrant. So I'll let you take over and ask any questions, comments. Bob's available if you want to seek his thoughts on what he intends to do with the property.
I didn't see Mr. Bennington. You're over there. Would you like to say something or you're just here for, just in case we got questions?
No, just looking.
Okay, all right. Any questions? Brent?
Mr. Bruce, could you describe, I mean, the lots are not being subdivided evenly, which raises a lot of concerns to me. The lot in the back, you know, I have major concerns about it, even though I know there's the requisite amount of area and width to do a pipe stem lot on this property. The way it's been laid out, I think it raises some issues with our ordinance, the intent of the R-1B district, it raises some issues with the comprehensive plan. How wide is the buildable, sorry, excuse me, how deep is the buildable area that's been left on that lot in the back, Lot B?
Well, you've got 10,600 square feet, obviously, on Lot B and, you know.
Yeah, how deep is the buildable area? I know there's 8,200 square feet.
Lot A.
No, on Lot B, the buildable outline, which has been shown in dash line there, the BRL, how deep is that area? I'm trying to get a sense of the home that could be built on that property. How deep would it be?
Forty-five, 40 feet back here?
I don't have a scale on me. If I had a scale, I could just scale it out. And I apologize for not doing that in advance of the meeting, but.
I mean, the zoning administrator said it met the code.
Well, I know that it meets, at a minimum, yes, you know, it meets the code. But part of the reason it comes to the Planning Commission is so that we can provide some input on whether or not we feel it, again, it meets the intent of the ordinance and the plan. And, you know, from a character standpoint, there are no, correct me if I'm wrong, there are no pipe stem lots currently on Lincoln, anywhere on the entire stretch of Lincoln from the Arlington border to the Fairfax border or Sycamore. There's no, there are no pipe stem lots. At least on, well, at least west of Great Falls there aren't. Maybe there's some, maybe there's some east of there. But even, that's really besides the point. I guess my concern is more whether or not there's been any discussion, maybe it's a question for the applicant, about splitting these lots evenly. Because I feel what's being done here is really making that lot in the back, even though it's not technically a substandard lot, it's really diminishing the value of that lot in the back. And I wonder why there's that inequity between the two lots.
You might want to talk about Lot B and what you intend on doing here and why did you move it in that.
And maybe you could just explain why you decided to draw the lots this way, because there are different ways it could be, it could be done and still conform with the ordinance. It's not that this is the only way.
Lot B was drawn, the buildable part was to.
The overall, I'm sorry to interrupt you, the overall area, why did you decide to split it 8,200 and then 10, whatever it is, 10? Why not split it evenly?
Well, it actually, we were told that it was split evenly because of the, the pipe stem actually belongs to the rear lot.
Right, but couldn't you, couldn't the pipe stem be shortened? I mean, because that raises concerns too. The length of the pipe stem is what's generating that, perhaps the issue about having to sprinkler that home in the rear because of the fire code.
It doesn't, it doesn't meet the offsets by doing that. If you shorten, if you shorten the pipe stem, then you shorten the Lot A. Okay, then that doesn't meet the offsets in the rear.
Well, it depends how large you build the home on Lot A. I just wanted to know if there are any other alternatives that were looked at on how to do, how to do this? Because I feel like the way it's being done, what's left over in the back really looks like a residual piece that is really out of character with anything else on that, on Lincoln.
We suggested that they at least consider the possibility of doing a duplex.
Which is also permitted, right, in the R-1B.
Yeah, but, you know, your house here is going to be a nice home, and so you want to be able to design and build what you want to retire in.
And we actually own the property next door, 902. We built a house that was, we didn't expand anything in the depth, in the depth of the house, it's the same size. And we're not building anything deeper than what we have next door.
But I'm concerned for the future. I'm concerned more about, I'm not concerned about Lot A, the way you've drawn it, but I'm concerned about Lot B and the house that might one day be built on Lot B and what's being left over there. I don't know why the lots couldn't be, again, more equitable so that there was a little bit more area given to B, you might be able to build a more regularly sized home on that lot.
I mean, what we've built in the back is, I mean, we're not, we're not looking to build a McMansion in the back. I mean, you know, we like to build, save the trees that are in the backyard. If you build a bigger house in the backyard, you'll be infringing on those trees, you might have to take them down, you know, it will hurt the health of them. You know, we're trying to, the backyard, we're trying to save as much as we can as to the way it is now with the trees. And if we build anything bigger back there, it's going to infringe on those.
Right. Well, that may be true. And I know the tree preservation issue has been put off till when and if it ever, you know, when, time to build, so it's hard to discuss about. I know this is just a subdivision, so there's no proposed house design for Lot B, at least not that we've seen. So we just have to go on a hypothetical, but I still have concerns about the inequity between what it will look like with the larger home in the front, smaller home in the rear. Just from a character standpoint, I feel that it's unusual to have a pipe stem like, quite like that, especially in that part of the city. I don't know of anything else that looks quite like that.
Actually, if it was, excuse me, if it was a bigger home in the back, it would really infringe on the homes that are in the, that are joining that property.
Right.
I think, I think it would tower over those. So I mean, it's, it gives the option of building like a, well, like you say, like an in-law cottage, you know, just a smaller home, you know, we're not looking to put a bigger home back there.
Right. But again, you know, we have to look out for the long term. You know, we don't know who will live there. Maybe you, maybe somebody else. This lot will be here. Once this lot is subdivided, it'll be here forever, almost, just like the lot that was, that exists today was subdivided, I think, probably close to 100 years ago, if not more. So we have to look long-term at what may or may not come there. And I just have, I've taken up enough time. I just have concerns about that from a character standpoint, and I just don't know. I know this meets the minimum, but I don't know if this is the only way to do it. I don't know if your surveyor looked at other options, and that's my main concern.
Who's the guy in the permit office upstairs in the rear?
The zoning or the building inspector?
Maybe the building inspector.
Doug?
No, there's, it's right behind Chris.
John Boyle, the zoning.
Yeah, I actually, you know, went to this and talked to John Boyle about, we were given the opportunity to buy the property. And I went to him and said, you know, can a builder come in there and put two houses on that lot? Because we were interested in protecting our lot next door. And he said, no, you can't do it because there's, there's not enough road frontage. So I said, fine. You know, I started to walk out and he goes, whoa, wait a minute, you can put a pipe stem in there. We sat down and drew all the setbacks, you know, what you could do, what's the minimum you could do, what's the maximum you could do? And this is what he came up with, with the setbacks along each side of the property.
Right. Now, I mean, with all due respect to John Boyle, I mean, he's our zoning administrator, but he's not a, you know, he doesn't design subdivisions for people. So, you know, I think the reality is, is that, I just wonder if there are other options. So that's what I'm looking at, and I think that there could be, and it might make two homes, because one day there are going to be two, the way you've proposed, two homes here, and I'd like them to at least relate to each other in some way and fit in. And in the home in the back, I just have, even though, you know, again, it's somewhat hidden in the back, I just have concerns about it, even from, you know, what it does to the value of that home in the back, kind of diminishes the value, kind of in lieu of putting more of it in the front. It just, it's unusual to me. So that's my main question. I don't know if my colleagues have any other questions, but I'll leave it at that.
I just want to get clarification, then I'll let you speak. There is currently an existing house there. And is the intent then to tear this one down and build a new home?
Yes.
Okay, and so there'll be two new homes, that's the intent?
Right.
Okay, I just was unclear. All right.
No, I had some of the same issues that Mr. Rassner had. I guess the thing about it is, is though, I looked at the setbacks, and you're right, the setbacks make it, the lots have to be the way they are for both the front, the A and the B lot to have the proper setbacks, so there's no other way to really divide that property. But I think the thing that really hits you when you look at it is the building envelope seems to be 20 feet wide by about 80. We don't have that clearly measured in here, but that's about what it looks like based on the other scale. And I think so, it really just begs the question, if it's 20 feet wide, where's the orientation of the front of that house going to be? And so typically, you'd want it facing the house in front of it on a pipe stem. But I think it's just going to be, it's going to be a very awkward house to design, 25, because, I mean, I may be wrong, but it looks to be about 20 feet wide. So I think that that's what's hitting us is like, it would be helpful to understand what might actually go in an envelope like this. And I think that's where the question is, you know.
I'm sorry, I can't call on you back there. If you have a speaker slip, then I'm happy to listen to you speak.
Sorry, I'm a first-time caller.
Longtime listener?
No time listener.
Yeah, it's just right outside, and then I'm going to open this to public comment once we finish. Anyone else? Yeah, Mr. Stevens?
Yeah, I can understand the owner, you know, what the motivation is to enhance the value of the property. I guess I'm concerned because the end result of this is it puts density in a place that is not really ideal for it. Density can be very productive in our commercial areas, but in our residential areas, typically we're trying to avoid too much density, and this is going to put a house right in the middle of the triangle in that, in that area. I'm open to my fellow commissioners. I don't know if there's a basis for doing something other than approving. I'm not aware of it, but the end result is not propitious for the, for the neighborhood. I'll leave it at that.
Yeah, along with what Melissa said, you know, we really don't know what would be the buildout of the second house, and we have no information on where it would be.
I mean, this one says, page two of the, I don't know, one of the documents, shows that the front door would be towards Lincoln, it's designated, so I don't know if that's the orientation question, location of the front door.
Oh, okay, okay.
I don't know if that helps, but.
I'm getting, feeling there's a little confusion also involved with it all. I just, there's something that I'm, either I'm missing or just the fact that I'm not sure that everybody knows exactly what's going on.
Well, let me speak for myself. I think I know what's going on. These are my least favorite applications. We get these on a regular basis where we take a residential lot that's oversized or has the ability to be built on, and we get applications like this that says we want to subdivide it and put two homes or three homes or something like that. And the Planning Commission has very little ability beyond what's in our code and our setbacks and our ordinances to not approve it. I've been faced with this more times than I can count here in the city, and it is very frustrating. I think this is a poor use of this land. I think that the house that's being proposed back there adds density that's not necessary and is not well-designed. But like Mr. Stevens sort of indicated, I don't have basis for not approving it. If it meets the setbacks and the codes, then I don't have a basis, honestly. But it does appear to me, and again, I understand why you'd want to do it, it makes sense from a financial perspective, but I would hope that the house that we are putting here is thoughtfully considered. This, this design of this very narrow width by very long house seems ill-fitting and will not match the existing neighborhood in the way that I think is beneficial to the community. So I'm not confused, but I don't have a way to deny this, unfortunately.
I understand what you're saying. I just think that, you know, there are designs for homes that are thin like that, you know, I mean, it's.
Well, then maybe, maybe we need to see that. I mean, I think, you know, I don't, just sort of chime in again, but we may not be able to, you know, there's a byright option here, but it doesn't mean it's this option, and it doesn't mean that we, our job, maybe we cannot prevent a subdivision here, but we can make it less bad and less out of character. And I mean that, all due respect. I mean, this is going to be here for a long time, and so I want whatever happens here to be the best possible under the circumstances that our current ordinance allows a splitting here. But I think, I'd like, I have a lot of concerns about what the house there would look like. It appears to me it would only be at least maybe 20 feet deep, 25, I don't even have my scale on me, but. it'll have my scale on me, but, and oriented that, oriented long way to the street.
Another question.
I, I just, I, I think we, I think it would help the, I know it would help me, it probably would help my colleagues to see that. I don't think I'm ready to vote on this tonight, maybe my colleagues, I don't know if they agree or not, but I would recommend that we defer this and get some sample conceptual designs of what something might look like here.
I mean, are you, are you looking at, like, getting architectural designs?
Something very conceptual, we don't need engineer drawings, I said, I don't need engineer drawings, it could even be a sketch, I'm trying to look at what might fit here. I'll also be curious to know, again, as I said from the beginning, if there are any other ways to even up the sizes of the lots, in a way. But, but, you know, but at a minimum, I think, seeing what would go, as you've proposed, on that back lot. Not that we would condition you to building that, but just something, to give us a sense that what, what it might look like back there, and to gauge the character. I mean, the intent of the R1B district talks about character and protecting residential neighborhoods, and I think at a minimum, you know, given how, you know, I don't think that's asking, asking too much on a subdivision when it's slightly out of the norm, as this one is. When it's, sometimes it's easy for us to look at a lot and picture what's going to go on it without having to see the house, and this one, I know it would help me.
So, from that second page, it looks like lot B is 82 feet deep, 30-foot setback on the front and back, so it's 22-foot deep buildable lot. I think we've probably seen 22-foot wide.
Right, but not oriented lengthwise.
But this, but this is 20-foot, 2-foot deep.
Deep, right, so the fact that it's.
Which is unusual, I would think.
It's very unusual.
Well, it's interesting that it's 22 feet deep, but the front door will be on the long side.
Yeah, that's what I'm saying, it's not a 22-foot white house.
You've seen buildings like this that can be attractive, that this, so you could even just show us pictures of those buildings.
I mean, you know, even though, even though it's only 22 feet, you can have the, I'm trying to think of the, the term that's used, even though it's built, a buildable lot, you can actually extend over it by.
Bay windows, and things like that, is that what you're, you're talking about, you can extend it by having?
Well, you know, you build the foundation up, and then you can build out.
A little bit.
Over the ground, and it's only like two or.
Cantilevered?
Two or four feet, but that's.
Cantilevered?
Cantilevered.
Yeah, yeah, but there's a limit in our code to how far you can go.
Yeah, there's a limit to that.
That's like two feet, but then.
But it's really just, that's really in the code to allow for like a bay window or something, not for you to have.
Right.
Lots of structure out there. You, you do the whole wall, then it's the house, and it doesn't count.
I wouldn't want to see the owner of this lot come back in and ask for a variance to exceed these setbacks, because we created a lot that while it met the minimum standards, was practically difficult to build on, 20, even if that, even if that's 20 years from now, so I think it would really help us to see.
I don't know what we could request, but the lot A is 118 feet deep with 30-foot rear setback, 25-foot front, so there's lots, you could shrink lot A, and to your point, because the pipe stem is included in lot B, lot B would become potentially, you're getting a lot A, but you would, you know, every foot you shrink lot A would give you a foot in depth on the lot B buildable, buildable space. So I mean, if, if that's some sort of big concern, that's, seems, in terms of technically doable, there's no obvious reason you couldn't do that.
Just so I get some clarification, I've, I've now heard a couple times, we reference these two lots being the same. In the staff report, it says lot A is 10,030 square feet, and lot B is 8,200 square feet. Is that not counting this, the driveway or the pipe stem? So are they in fact the same size?
The pipe stem is not included in the rear, rear size.
So they're both 10,000 square feet, if, including the?
The other one's, what, 98, something like that.
But, I mean, very close.
Roughly the same, yeah.
Um, you know. Could you clarify what you were talking about when you mentioned the arborists? The concerns of the arborists? What I see happening here is by subdividing this, by our actions, it, it certainly will create a situation where it's a by, by right lot.
This area is 82.
That, no one will have any, any say in, other than our own setbacks and everything like that. So what were, all the concerns from the arborists that you kind of mentioned, I didn't quite follow you on that?
Yeah, basically, until there's a grading plan, there's, there's not a house location, there's no details, we don't know where the driveway would be on either one of these lots, and so what the arborist has said is, we would like to have enough information to be able to adequately preserve the trees that are designated. Now, the subdivision code requires on the final plat, which is before you tonight, to show the location of any trees to be preserved. So what we've done is we've added a note, and this is one of the first times we've done it, there's a note on this plat that'll carry that authority forward to the staff and arborist, when they get the details of grading plan, to be able to evaluate those tree preservation objectives accurately and effectively. And so, while technically the code says they're supposed to show it tonight, we're going to capture that authority instead of letting it go tonight, and carry it on to the staff, and we've never done that before.
Yeah.
But in looking at the code and how it's written, that's in effect of what we really need to do. Now, they have some authority to require the tree preservation, but this gives them more. In effect, you're transferring your authority to them, and it gives them more authority when they have enough information to be able to figure it out. Because right now, we don't get enough information.
Well, that's the way I feel.
Effectively, what can be saved and what can't. We can estimate it, and so, and it's the same thing with the public improvements, if there's any sidewalk requirement or so forth, and a bond requirement, we're capturing that authority and moving that forward as well, whereas before, we've just let it lapse.
I don't know, depending on anything to be put into action in the future does not really appeal to me. And I just think we really don't have enough information on this situation.
What are you concerned about the, about something about the future?
I'm sorry?
What was it you're concerned about?
The trees.
Well, it, it was just the fact that, how buildable, you know, with, with this whole intention of putting a note on the plat to go forward with it, that it's not been done yet before, now, it's not, I'm not ever saying just because it hasn't been done before, or can't be, but I just think that there's really a whole lack of information on where things would be located, as far as the driveways, and, you know, you've got the pipe stem in here, but other than, on the second page, it gets a little bit more clear.
All right, do we have any other questions?
Four, I don't understand about the driveway shown there. Isn't the driveway shown there? Isn't the pipe, isn't the pipe stem the driveway?
Yeah. It's shown, we have it. No, we, we see.
Right, it's on there.
The pipe stem shows clear, the pipe stem is the driveway to B.
Right.
The A would have to have its own driveway.
Okay, I'm sorry.
So just a quick comment, just listening to all of my colleagues, I do agree with all of the comments that came, you know, came to you. One of the things that I'd like you to look at is to be a little bit more creative with this, and then have some sensibility towards the design, you know, within the neighborhood, look at what, what has occurred in the neighborhood, and try to sort of, take a good look at it, and come back with something that's more palatable to, to the planning commission, and I, and I'm sure the city can help you with that.
I mean, are you just talking about design of house?
Not the design of the house, but how you can adjust, you know, the lot to be able to put in a house that, you know, it's not a, sort of a shotgun 20-foot by 80-foot house.
Yeah, it's not our purview to.
Mr. Rankin suggested was that you could shift the lot lines a little bit, and one way you could do it is, the building envelope for lot A is very large, and you could shrink that by five feet, which would allow the line between the two lots to go by five feet, which would give you at least 27 feet, because we finally did find the measurement, it's 22 feet across. So then at least you'd have 27, and so you'd have a building envelope that's a little bit more normal, and I think it would be easier for you to design a house for it.
I mean, it's.
And it's not in our purview to say anything about the architectural.
Yeah, well, for this.
It's always about lot.
I mean, it's kind of what you're saying, with saying a normal house.
Well, I, I think she's right, like, the actual look, but, but I think for our feeling is, we're very uncomfortable with approving someone with 22 by 80 feet building envelope with the front doors on the long side, because we don't know a house that looks normal, that would fit in the neighborhood, I, I've never seen one. And so you say that there are houses, and that we'd just like to see those before we approve this. So we'd like to, I, I think we'd like to continue tonight and get, it could just be photos of houses that are like that, just something to see what that would look like, or, you know, what you think would fit in there. Does that make sense? Because you, you yourself said you knew houses, so I'd like to see them. It's no different than what we did with the Hill and Garden Inn when they brought that in, and we didn't like the design, we had them bring photos in of other Hill and Garden Inns. We ask this all the time.
I find, I find it kind of a little frustrating that, that a planning commission could say that versus a, you know, like with the site plans and stuff like that, I mean, it's just, I don't, I don't know how to explain what I'm trying to, to say here, but it just, it seems like, you know, I've done everything that I've, that your codes have, you know, said to do, and, you know, it's not, not meeting, you know, it's meeting all your, your codes, all your setbacks, all your planning, you know, I've gone to all your different departments in the city, and they've suggested this.
And, and I totally agree, and I can understand your frustration, but if you read our city code, the role of the planning commission is that we're to review these, and try to make sure that they work within the comprehensive plan of our city and how, how we look at residences. And so, it, this is how the city was set up.
Otherwise, it would be a, otherwise, it would be an administrator process.
Right.
The council's determined that should go to the planning commission.
That was the wrong term I used, that.
Right.
Yeah.
So, there is a reason why it's here, because there's more than one way to do it by right. We're not disputing you have a by-right option to subdivide, what we are disputing is the way you've chosen to do it, because it's not the only way, there are other options. It may not be, it's up to you to decide what options are feasible for you, but we're telling you that this option is raising concerns.
Yeah.
Mr. Chair, one other comment. What this points out to me, and maybe just because I'm new, I would make this kind of observation, but it seems to me the city needs some kind of a policy on, on pipe stem proposals, beyond just setbacks and so forth, but, you know, really some, some consideration as to how a pipe stem type project would, would work in, in existing neighborhoods, so I'll just make that comment, that doesn't apply to this situation, obviously, but.
And I'd like to follow up on that, we've got, we approved a subdivision over on Rosemary, and it is really a little uncomfortable with the, with the juxtaposition of, there's a new house, then there's a new house behind, but the new house behind is behind a longstanding house. And it's so, and the, it's just, it just is strange. You know, the orientation of everything is just not pleasing at all. You drive by and you say, what? And it's, you know, it's right over there, right, factory property.
All right, I'd like to hear, if we don't have any other comments, I'd like to hear from the two speakers we have listed for this.
Put the house, put the door on the side, dude.
And then we'll decide if we are going to defer it, to get.
Just got one question.
Yeah, sure.
I was just going to ask, you know, you're concerned about putting the front door on the long part of the house? What does putting this, the door on the side of the house do?
No, I don't think we're suggesting that, I was just, when I saw the length of it, I was trying to think, the only thing I knew who would fit in there would be an odd standalone townhouse, so I'm like, well, where's the front door and something like that? So that's why we were asking. No, we, we, in, in all these kinds of pipe stems, we always prefer that the door be oriented to the main street. So that, that's not incorrect, we're just trying to figure out what that would look like. Just, and, and we're, like I said, we're not looking for your final design or, we're just trying to say, what would something like that look like? Or could you possibly shorten the building envelope on A so that you can increase the building envelope for B, so you have a little bit more room to work for a better design? That's all we're saying.
Right. So what's my next recourse?
Well, we're going to hear from the public, and then we'll take a vote whether we're going to take action tonight or defer it, and the deferral would be to, it seems like that's where we're heading, honestly, and the deferral would say we'd like to see some design or other alternatives to the current building envelope that you've proposed. And that, that's, that's what we would ask from you, and then, you know, you have your choice about how you want to proceed from that point. You do, as we've all indicated here, you have a by-right building option here, but before we approve it, we want to see some options.
All right. Okay.
All right, I, any other comments before I open it to the public? All right. First speaker slip I have on this is Cynthia Gardner.
Thank you, good evening Chairman Wadyska and members of the planning commission. I do not live in the immediate neighborhood of 900 Lincoln Avenue, but I went by yes, today, and looked at the plans at the planning department, and I have just two quick thoughts. The first is that I heartily agree that the council should take up the question of minimum lot requirements for pipe stem lots. Pipe stem lots are someplace slightly shy of an abomination on the city, they should have been ruled out many decades ago, and I think we are now seeing, and you will probably continue to see to the extent that there is extra land, increased pressure for them. So I would highly recommend that council, you all might consider recommending to council that they look at that question. A pipe stem lot is, is difficult. This one in particular has only, I think, a 15-foot wide driveway, which is why the fire marshal indicated that because a fire truck cannot get down that driveway to the back house, that the house in the back would have to have a, an automatic sprinkler system put in. And I wouldn't want to be somebody in that back house if there was a fire and the sprinkler system didn't work. So I would, I don't know what, I, I don't know what authority you have to say no, but I would strongly suggest that a driveway wide enough to be able to allow the passage of a fire truck is probably a really wise thing to do, or at least enough cleared space so that with a paved driveway and then some additional in on top, a fire truck could get back there. Particularly if it's going to be anything like a large house at all, no, no matter what the, the, the building envelope ends up getting, you know, configured to be able to be buildable. That would be a concern, I would, I would think. And the only other option I thought of, and again, this is not my property, and it's not my neighborhood, and it's kind of a two cents, and you can certainly feel free to ignore it. But the city seems to love artist studios and ADUs, and why not build a, leave the property not subdivided, and build a garage back there with a really nice ADU on it, which could either be an income-producing property, or for the family to use? Just a thought, there are lots of artist studios all over the city, and that doesn't require a subdivision, and might provide a little bit more flexibility in terms of tree preservation. Just a thought. And I, I would like to talk about the deferral of 116, but I know that's not open right now. Thank you.
Thank you. This is a question for staff, I was not familiar with the fire truck issue, they're saying it can't pass on a 15-foot driveway?
I'm sorry, I wasn't, I'm sorry, I wasn't listening, I was writing.
Yeah, the, the 15-foot driveway is an issue with the fire truck, and in what way?
Well, you can do it with 20 feet, but not with 15. Anything over 150 feet, state code says that you have to widen the pipe stem or provide automatic sprinkler system, so you've got a couple options, but not many.
I think the fire marshal said if you weren't going to have a 20-foot driveway, you'd have to have a sprinkler in the rear.
Yes, no, definitely, but I'm confused why a fire truck couldn't pass on a 15-foot driveway.
The issue.
It's a code issue.
No, no, I, I got, okay, all right.
The, the issue that we're always faced with is, what do we do, given state code, on deep lots with pipe stems, in other words, that are over 150 feet? That's the dilemma.
If you're gonna, I'm sorry, if you're gonna speak, I need to for the, you have the microphone so that. so that those not in the room can hear. Again, ratings.
We were told about the 15-foot and then the fire truck in the back, and it was, given an option of making that a 20-foot wide, which it could only be 15 for the pipe stem, but you can give a five-foot buffer of, you know, you can't plant anything. So, you know, if a fire truck had to get back here, it can get back here. But then we were told about, if it's over 150 feet, you would just sprinkle it and you wouldn't have to worry about that.
Okay. It's not a Christmas, I just was unaware of that state code, so I was just getting clarification.
Okay. That's, I mean, we address that, so...
Yeah. Clearly, you did.
All right, thanks.
All right. Brittany Sikota?
Good evening. Brittany Sikota, I live directly behind the property at 402 Northwest Street, so our properties essentially back up to each other. And with all due respect to my neighbor, the way this neighborhood is, if you see on the map, it's kind of a little triangle, and all the houses, for the most part, were built at the very front of the lots, and then there are all these very deep skinny lots. And so, when you stand in my, off my deck, which is on Northwest Street, and you look back, it's all very open. It's almost park-like, because everyone's houses are up by the street. And so, this house, if constructed in the way it's designed with these dotted lines here on Lot B, will essentially just be a big wide rectangle in the middle of all these existing houses. You know, much like a community center, if, you know, if you were having a community center, but, and so, that's our only real concern, is that, to your point, it's not really in the character of the neighborhood to have it go the opposite direction of all the other houses, potentially be this big wide thing with all these, you know, square homes surrounding it. We just feel, like I said, it's not really in the character of the neighborhood.
All right. Thank you very much. I think I'm ready for a motion on this. I am hearing that there's general consensus about deferment, but I need someone to make that motion and give some direction to what we're expecting from the applicant when they come back.
Mr. Fuller, do we, you have a date you would like us to do this, or do you want to do it?
Well, let me give you the two dates, and then, based on what the information you're looking for, we can see how we can work that out. So, it'd either be to, in two weeks, December 18th, or past your administrative meeting in January, your second meeting would be the 16th.
I think January 16th.
I think they need more time. I can't see how, turning it around in two weeks.
Well, it depends on, I mean, if you just want pictures, but I don't think that's where we ended up. If you just want pictures...
No, I think we're looking for, I mean, I know what I was looking for was, well, I mean, some conceptual ideas about what could fit there, but I think we're, it sounds like there's a lot of concern about even, you know, even in trying to envision what could fit there. I'd like to see some, any alternatives to the proposal. Could they, again, change it so they could shift that house further up? Could they make a deeper house, more than 22 feet? So, I'd like to see some other options.
I did some quick math. It seems like you could move that, the lot line, splitting the two lots 10 feet closer to Lincoln. Now, the challenge is that the Lot A building envelope seems to be drawn around the existing house, so you would have to do one of these things where you can't subdivide until that house is demolished. But it seems like the math adds up. It would give you a bigger buildable area for the rear house, which maybe makes it look more normal. I don't think it solves the fundamental problem of pipe stem, but I don't know that we can stop that.
Right, right. No, and that's one option. And we're not, obviously, not gonna sit here tonight and redesign the subdivision for the applicant either, but, yeah, I mean, there obviously are other options. I think the applicant, there's homework to be given. I think the homework is to go back and look at other options. Talk to your surveyor, designer, or if you're so inclined to, you know, look at it yourself and try to come up with some other ideas that might address what you've heard tonight. That's the best guidance I think we can give, is that this seems too, just you can't get a fit of house on there that will work. Or if you can, we can envision it, so show us. So, that's where I'm at.
Ms. Teetz, are you gonna make the motion, or are you passing this off to Brent?
I'll make a motion, yeah. I mean, I think...
Well, I'm trying not to cough, so I'm gonna let you do it, Brent.
Sure. Yeah, I'll move that we defer the, defer action on the 900 Lincoln Avenue subdivision to the January 16th. Is that the date?
January 16th.
January 16th, 2018, meeting with...
I second it.
Okay. Any comments on that motion? Any more clarity we want to provide, or we good?
We're good.
We're good. All right.
Well, I say, you tell exactly what you want for January 16th.
I don't have any more information to offer than Mr. Krasner just stated there. It's just to understand other options, to understand how a house would work in that space, different alternatives on how to redraw those lot lines. Mr. Rankin threw out a proposal that if we make a stipulation that says the existing house needs to be demolished before you can, before it can be subdivided, and therefore gives you some more flexibility. There are several options we've covered this evening, so I don't have any more to add beyond what has been stated this evening. Ms. G, can you take the roll?
Yes.
Not the roll, the roll call vote?
Sorry. Mr. Jean?
Yes, for deferment.
I'm sorry?
Yes, for deferment.
Thank you. Ms. Hockenberry?
Yes.
Mr. Krasner?
Yes.
Mr. Rankin?
Yes.
Mr. Stevens?
Yes.
Ms. Teetz?
Yes.
Mr. Wadyska?
Yes.
Motion passes unanimously.
All right. Thank you, everyone, on that. The next item is the 116 East Jefferson Street subdivision. This one, we had actually already determined that we are going to continue to December 18th, 2017. However, before we do that, Mrs. Gardner, you have asked that you speak on this issue. So...
Thank you, Mr. Wadyska. I just wanted to say very quickly, I spoke with several neighbors who received the notices for this subdivision in the neighborhood, and I think the letter that actually went out, the picture of the plat was the 116 East Jefferson Street, but the letter, it's in fact, referred to 900 Lincoln Avenue. So, I think the paperwork got confused. And so, there were several neighbors who looked at the address and said, "Oh, I don't need to pay attention to that." So, if it would be, if it wouldn't be too much to ask, could you send another letter to make sure everybody, everybody who's supposed to get it gets it, and that it actually refers to the right one? And I apologize for saying that publicly, but I didn't know how else to do it. And at least one neighbor said, the 18th, it's like a week before Christmas, is there any way you could defer it into January? You might actually get more participation from the neighborhood on it. And, you know, I'm not, I'm obviously not in charge of your calendar, but I know, I know neighbors will want to discuss it, because it is gonna, probably gonna be a pipe stem, and it's gonna be a pipe stem right in the middle with a lot of other pipe stem houses around it. So, there will be a fair amount of neighborhood concern about it. And that is my neighborhood, so I'll be there again. Thank you very much.
It is a pipe stem, so spoiler alert. I'm open, thank you. I'm open to deferment, but, Mr. Fuller, do we have a sense of what the calendar is on the 16th? It's filling up quick.
Well, it sounds like we need to re-notify the neighbors.
Perhaps. I mean, I, there was...
That we have the time for re-notification.
I mean, if we bother to notify...
Yeah, on the calendar, on the 18th of December, we have, let's see, a public hearing on the future land use related to the boundary adjustment areas, which is the school campus and city properties. And we also have the 116 Great Falls subdivision, which you had done a special exception on previously. And then, the 116 East Jefferson, obviously, we need to re-notice that in terms of the letters. And so, that could be, it could be on the 18th, but it just as easily could be on the, you know, the January date, 16th.
But, so what's on, do you have a sense of what's on the 16th of January?
At this point...
Other than the 900 Lincoln Avenue?
Public hearing on Broad and Washington.
A public hearing?
Public hearing.
Yeah, that's a quick one. Okay.
So, I mean, potentially, we had three items for the 18th. Public hearing on the future land use map change, the two subdivisions, the Jefferson and the Great Falls. It's listed on the second page of your agenda.
I think this notification, we're gonna have to push it forward somewhere.
You couldn't re-notice it in time, sooner than that, right?
It's a 10-day notice.
Oh, it is?
For 14 days out.
So...
Technically, yeah, it can be done.
I mean, I think it's a fair request to defer it beyond December, whatever.
Right, I hate doing things...
December 18th, again, with, right. But I am concerned about the 16th of January, this Broad and Washington, clearly by tonight's meeting alone, we know it's gonna be a long one, and I suspect more comments about 900 Lincoln Avenue at that time as well. So, I'm somewhat concerned about putting it on that particular day. We do need a date, though, so let's put it on the 16th, and if we have to take action at our administrative meeting, because the agenda is too long, then we will, I guess, address it on the beginning of January. What's that, what's the administrative date? It's...
Administrative date for 2nd of January, it's Tuesday.
The 2nd?
Yeah.
We're meeting right out of the box? Okay. Okay. All right. Well, let's defer it. We don't need a motion on this, though. It's already been deferred, or...
No.
It's already been advertised as being deferred?
It was noticed in terms of letters to adjacent property owners. So, at this point, because it was noticed, we would wanna defer it to a date certain.
Okay. Easy enough.
Even though we're gonna rerun the letter anyway. So, in that case, we wouldn't need a date certain, so...
Well, let's take a motion. That'll take a few seconds, and please make sure the neighbors are notified with whatever the correct information is. Anyone would like to make this motion to defer to January 16th, 2018?
So moved, Mr. Chairman. We'll defer it to January 18th.
Second?
Second.
She beat you, Tim. Okay. All those in favor, say aye.
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 You said the 18th, you said 16th, is what we...
16th.
16th. Okay, for the record, 16th.
All right, January 16th, sorry.
Of 2018.
Yeah, amended to...
Amended. Are we clear on this, the date? Okay. All right. We are coming to the end. I appreciate everybody hanging through this. The approval of the minutes on, of November 20th, we are going to continue these minutes, so I'd need a motion to continue them. I don't have them.
I move that we continue the minutes for, I've got the date, what's the date on here?
December 18th.
December 8th, oh, November 20th to December 18th.
I got a second.
A second? I seconded, so I beat you to it.
All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Mr. Stevens? We're on the button. Keep it there. All right. Does anybody have any planning commission reports?
I'll make a quick comment, so we have something.
Yeah, no, well, it sounds like Mr. Rankin's gonna...
I went down to the Tree Light Inn, and I think that the light in, the light in that they picked this year with the colors on the trunk and the white snowflakey-looking balls is the best lights we've ever put up.
Right, I agree with you.
And I think it really makes downtown look like a downtown, which is nice. So, I really appreciate everyone who was involved in that and got those lights up.
And there was even a bigger amount of, larger amount of people eating out that night, too, in the restaurants, which is good.
Mr. Rankin?
I just had, there was an EDC meeting last Thursday morning. We talked a lot about Founder's Row, their, as everyone knows, swapping out their hotel for age-restricted apartments. Eric Smart, who's a consultant of the city, hires to work out the service go tween, had a lot of thoughts on that. Seems like we may hear some more sometime soon. Seems like changes some of the numbers, wasn't really clear how people felt about it, so... And then, they talked a little about some downtown parking stuff, and then, I guess, you know, whoever mentioned condos, there's two potential condo things out there, one at Park and Lee, which is like a live-work thing, which is kind of interesting. And then, the 400 North Washington people that had wanted to build an office building, they're now looking at condo options, so maybe we'll have some smallish condo buildings coming down the pipe.
And I will point out, there are, one been moved in condos in the Spectrum. And some of them are actually very cool. I've looked at a couple of them. One's called The Tree House.
The Tree House, nice.
Yeah.
All right. Thank you. Mr. Fuller, do we have a planning director's report?
Only in terms of the schedule, and we briefly covered the 18th of December already. And then, we also talked about the administrative meeting on January 2nd, and on January 16th, we also talked about, we have the public hearing scheduled for Broad and Washington, and now the two subdivisions. So...
Okay. Busy night. All right. Immediately after this, we're gonna have a work session on Broad and Washington, which is why I know you're all here. All right. Meeting adjourned. We're gonna roll right into this. We don't move. You don't have to either. And again, unfortunately, during this process, we are not able to take public comment, so it's just a listening session. All right. Sorry for delaying you. Let's hear about Broad and Washington.
Good evening. I'm Akita Ruzi with planning. If I may, just wanted to provide a brief overview of the staff report and then turn it over to the applicant who's here for, with a presentation. The city council granted first reading and referred a proposed Broad and Washington mixed-use development project to boards and commissions on November 13th. The project is before you tonight as a work session item for feedback to the applicant and staff on the current submission. The planning commission public meeting for final recommendation to the council, as Mr. Fuller mentioned earlier, is scheduled tentatively for January 16th. The city council public meeting for second reading and final consideration is scheduled for April 9th. The proposed project is a mixed-use building with the following elements: up to six stories of residential multifamily rental apartments with 295 units above ground-floor retail, a six-story office building at the corner of East Broad Street and Washington, North Washington Street, ground-floor retail on the frontage of project on East Broad and North Washington Streets, including a community theater space, one story above ground, parking in addition to two underground levels. The building height proposed varies from 65 feet to 90 feet along East Broad Street, 12 feet to 65 feet along Lawton Street, 72 feet to 90 feet along North Washington Street, and an average height of 75 feet along the north elevation, which is facing Park Place. The development applications that's before you entail a comprehensive plan map amendment to change the entire site from business and transitional to mixed-use designation, rezoning of one parcel, which is at 131 East Broad Street, from transitional to B2, and special exception for residential development within the mixed-use development. and special exception for residential development within the mixed-use development, and another special exception for height bonus of up to 15 feet. The application materials in your packet represents the fifth submission of the project by the applicant. The project has gone through multiple revisions and iterations since it was first submitted in August of 2015. And some of the notable changes from the initial submission include removal of the city-owned land and parking lot from the overall project, the previously proposed grocery tenant was also removed, office square footage doubled to 66,700 square feet and located to the corner of Broad and Washington. Three-bedroom units are eliminated, there's now a commitment to 13,800 square feet of ground-floor restaurant, performance arts user also added, and reduced heights, additional step backs and increased setbacks provided along portion of the north elevation adjacent to the Lawton Street residential property. During a review of the fifth submission, several areas have been identified by staff to guide the applicant in further development and refinement of the proposed project. Those comments are in Attachment 7 of your staff report. Just to highlight some of those key issues that staff provided, improve architecture and material selection on north elevation, commitment for additional stormwater management, further development of TDM with city staff, additional crosswalks around the site for pedestrian safety, median break on North Washington to improve vehicular access to the city lot, and additional intersection enhancements at Broad and Washington. And these are in addition to the comments City Council provided, and that's also in the staff report, and I believe that's on the third page of the staff report, there's a list of things that the applicant is currently working on. With that, I will defer it to the applicant.
Thank you very much, and good evening. My name is Scott Adams, I'm a land use attorney with Maguire Woods, and I'm joined tonight by Maury Stern, who's a principal with Insight Property Group, which owns the property and is the applicant, and then also our, the rest of our team has commandeered the section to my left tonight, and they're available to answer questions as we get into the work session itself. As Ms. Ruzi mentioned, we've been working on this project since 2015, at least formally in the zoning process, and, you know, over that time, the project has evolved significantly, and I know that this is our first time before the planning commission formally, but I know that many of the members have been to work sessions that we've had with the City Council, and I know many of the members of the planning commission were at the walkthrough that was recently held at the property. So hopefully everyone has, you know, some familiarity with this project as it's gone through the process. And, you know, we're very excited to be here tonight to move this forward in the review process and get feedback from the planning commission. This will be the first of our meetings with boards and commissions, and so, you know, we're excited to get that process underway. For this evening, you know, the project itself, we think, over the past two years, has really benefited from the input that we've received from the City Council, from planning commission members, and from the public and our neighbors who are here tonight. And really, we think that the significant changes that have been made to the programming, the uses, the design, the massing, have really improved the project over time and led to what we think is a pretty good project that's before you tonight. And so for tonight, we'll run through some of the detailed information on the project, just so everyone has an understanding of where the project is at right now. And then we look forward to, again, a productive dialogue with the planning commission, answering any questions and really getting feedback from you.
Are you proposing a pipe stem?
We are not proposing a pipe stem this evening. So, overall project goals, again, this is located at what we think is the most prominent intersection in the city, Broad and Washington. And we also think that this is an important project, not only for us, but also for the city for a number of reasons. The biggest one is that it really anchors this important intersection in the city, and also provides a mix of uses that I think are needed and desired in the city, including a significant Class A office component of 66,700 square feet that's really like nothing else that's in the city right now. In addition, we have a significant retail program with significant details that have been committed to in the voluntary concessions, that have really nailed down what that retail program is going to look like moving forward. And really, we think it's something that's gonna enhance the downtown Falls Church experience, and really create a restaurant row that links to very significant arts establishments and venues in the State Theater and Creative Cauldron, which is proposed to have a permanent home as part of this project, and really is, in our view, a jewel of the city. And really, we think putting it in this location adds to the prominence for Creative Cauldron, but also really helps to solidify this area as an arts and entertainment district. Additionally, we've designed as part of this project some what we think are really great and unique public spaces, which we'll get into, and also in from a fiscal impact perspective, really creating a positive in terms of jobs being created and the amount of revenue being generated for the city. So just very quickly, this is our design team, really professionals at the top of their fields who understand Falls Church, have worked in the city, and really know how to execute and deliver on promises that we're making here tonight and making to the City Council as part of this project. And it really starts with Insight Property Group, who has a long track record, both here in Northern Virginia and also in the district, in terms of delivering really high-quality, unique projects that really are integrated well into the community. I'm just gonna let Maury Stern from Insight Property Group just speak quickly about their background, just to give you a feel for, I think, the quality of the developer who's with us.
Thanks, as Scott mentioned, I'm Maury Stern with Insight Property Group. We're based in Arlington, but we do work all over the DC metro area. A couple of our projects, you'll see throughout the slides here. The one on the top left is in DC on H Street Northeast called The Apollo. I use that as an example, we pick our sites very carefully. We don't just develop every site in the DC area, we try to plant a flag in each of the major jurisdictions, and so that's the project we plan to flag with in DC. Bought it about five years ago, and it opened about a year ago. This project here, Broad and Washington, is our flag in this area of Northern Virginia. We've developed the projects in Arlington, in Alexandria, near the Huntington Metro, and this is our next foray into Virginia development. We're about a nine-year-old company, very small, all local developers who've spent most of their careers, if not all their careers, in the development of multifamily housing and mixed-use developments in the DC metro area. So we focus solely on DC and pride ourselves in picking sites that we feel very passionate about and engage with the community and really try to build something that is, that the community wants. Sorry. There are three sort of main threads that you'll see in all of our projects, and a couple of examples of our projects here. We really focus on local art and try to integrate art into our buildings. You'll see that in places throughout this development. Couple of examples here, the top-left one is in Silver Spring, the bottom-left is the H Street project you mentioned, the two on the right are the Huntington Metro project, as well as the one in the middle. But we really, really take our time and pick artists that are part of the community and integrate that art, so it's not just a token art integration in our projects, it's actually part of the design and the development of the project. The second element is that we try to really create gathering spaces, both public and private, that people want to use, not just checking the box on amenities that we include in our projects, but really making sure that, whether for the residents, the office tenants, or the public, that there really are spaces that people want to spend time in. So again, a couple of examples of projects, I won't go through all of them. The one on the bottom right is The Apollo Project, the one on the top left is Silver Spring, and then a couple others scattered throughout there, and we'd be happy at any point to take the commission to these projects or any of these projects to see the spaces, but we do really spend a lot of time making sure that they are spaces that people want to spend time in. And then lastly, something we started with The Apollo Project on H Street and continue with the Silver Spring project on the top right, is public spaces within our buildings. So you hear a little bit later from Scott about, one of the public spaces we're offering up here is a indoor public space that's part of our lobby. So the top-left and the bottom-left is The Apollo Project on H Street. It's a lobby that's open to the public with a traditional retail coffee shop that's part of the lobby and allows the public to go back and forth between our, what is usually private apartment lobby, and a public coffee shop. And so we have some concepts here we'll talk about later as it relates to Creative Cauldron, integrating with the public lobby of this building.
So I think everyone is familiar with the site, currently developed with 33,400 square feet of, frankly, if you've been inside of it, obsolete office space right now, not really leasable. It's a surface-parked project that, you know, narrow sidewalks not meeting the current streetscape standards for the city, currently has no stormwater management facilities on-site, no green building elements, obviously, no public open space, and really no green space to speak of on-site. It's pretty well, fully developed with the existing buildings and the surface parking. And what we're proposing to do, as you know, is, we think is a true mixed-use development, providing a use of mixes, office, retail, residential, and creative cauldron to sort of holistically and in a balanced way create a successful project that's really gonna add to the city of Falls Church. Again, the significant Class A office space, 66,700 square feet of Class A office at the zero intersection of the city, a vibrant and varied set of ground-floor uses that we'll get into here in a minute. As was mentioned, the residential units, we've eliminated the three-bedroom units that were originally proposed to go down to some smaller, smaller units now. From an arts and entertainment standpoint, again, providing Creative Cauldron and really helping to solidify that arts and entertainment district. And then also making sure that we're providing public spaces and public pathways through the site that really integrate into the surrounding area and make sure that, you know, we're providing spaces for the public on-site that they want to come into. The Class A office space, really, we think is a cornerstone of this project. You know, this is a great location for office, and we think that it's an opportunity to really prove the office market in the city of Falls Church. You know, as we've gone through this process, we've heard over and over again the desire for Class A office. It's something that just doesn't really exist in the city right now. And we think that there's a real opportunity with this project to fulfill that need and that desire that we've heard. But again, we think it's vital to make sure that the office that's being put in actually works, so that it does prove the market and that it is successful. And we think that the design that we've come up with, the amount of office space, the design, and how it fits in with the other uses that are being proposed, you know, really will help ensure the success of the office, which again, you know, is a significant component of this project and something that we really think is gonna benefit, you know, Falls Church and hopefully open the door for more Class A office to come into the city. The retail program is really designed, again, to solidify the arts and entertainment district. And so you basically have two anchors that have been sort of integrated into this project. One that's off-site, the State Theater on North Washington Street. And what we've tried to do is design our project so that between the State Theater, as you come down Washington Street, turn the corner on Broad, that you have a unified, active retail ground-floor space, sort of a restaurant row, a specialty grocer, you know, really high-quality retail spaces that create that street frontage, and then as you curve around onto East Broad, coming down towards Lawton, you know, ending that up with our second anchor, which is Creative Cauldron, and really trying to create some synergy between Creative Cauldron with the State Theater, and really making sure that those uses that are being proposed help to benefit, you know, both of those entertainment venues and really add to the arts and entertainment aspect of this area, which is envisioned by the city's small-area plan. The voluntary concessions for this project, you have nailed down what's being proposed and what we anticipate going in. We have commitments to specific square footages for different types of uses, a 6,000-square-foot specialty grocer, 13,800 square feet of restaurant space, commitments to retail, and then also making sure that uses that we don't necessarily want in the building and that we've heard from the city and from the neighbors that they don't want are listed as prohibited uses in the voluntary concessions, to make sure we all know what the expectations are going in and what we are going to get at the end of the day. And we've worked very hard over the past probably six months with the City Council and staff to come up with those lists and really try to nail that down, so that, again, what you see is what you get for this project. Creative Cauldron, again, we think this is sort of the other cornerstone of this project. It's the, sort of, in our view, the jewel of the arts community in the city of Falls Church. And we think that providing them with a long-term home in this space, with a very prominent location on East Broad Street with a larger space than they're in now, is really a great thing for this project and for the city and for the arts and entertainment district. And what we've tried to do, you know, knowing that we want them in this building, that, you know, they are a big part of our plan, is really making sure that they're integrated into the design fully, making sure that the retail that's being proposed is complementary to what they're trying to achieve as an arts and entertainment destination, and making sure that we're also coordinating with them on the use of the residential lobby, like Maury talked about. You know, that space actually functions as sort of a co-use between Creative Cauldron, the residential, and then also as a public gathering space, and frankly extends the amount of space that Creative Cauldron has and provides other opportunities for them for activities before and after shows, and a place for people to gather and, you know, have discussions or do whatever they want to do before going into or coming from one of those shows. Additionally, we've tried to structure the lease for Creative Cauldron to make sure that their success at this space is ensured and that they can stay there for frankly as long as they want. We're currently in negotiations with them for a long-term lease, 20 years, with multiple renewals. And also, we've structured that or planned to structure the lease and the negotiations to make sure that they have fixed costs for, you know, what the rent is, and that means including commonary maintenance, real estate taxes into that rent, so that they don't have costs that fluctuate on a month-to-month basis. They know what they're gonna have to provide, which is frankly a lower rent than, you know, you would get from a commercial space, but again, you know, it's a use that we think provides a great benefit to the project and to the community. I think in addition to some of those rental discounts, we'll be providing and paying for the tenant fit-out for their space, so there will not be any out-of-pocket cost for them to actually move into a space that, you know, is designed for their purpose. You know, really, we estimate that the lease terms and some of the concessions that we've made in the, you know, the lease negotiations with them, it's a seven-figure number in terms of the value to the project that's being provided. You know, we think it's a great benefit, but it's still a cost, and a fairly hefty one, you know, in terms of what's being provided, in terms of the overall package for voluntary concessions for this project. But again, we think it's a better project with them there, and we think it's better for the city to have them in this prominent location. As part of the project, we've got a number of public spaces that are being provided. They really range in use and design, from what you would typically see sort of a green space, you know, park, to some fairly innovative uses of the actual, you know, building space, and providing some spaces that really aren't available right now in the city of Falls Church. The first space is the second-floor plaza between the office building and the residential. You know, that space is designed to function as a public park, open to the public during the same hours you would typically find for any public park in the city. We anticipate that there will be programming for that space as well for the public, and it's really gonna be designed as a space that's welcoming and accessible to the public wanting to come up and use the space. The space is primarily accessed from East Broad Street, we've got a public stairwell. We've got a public stairwell. Public stairwell leading up to the, the second floor with signage, making sure that people understand this is a public space. We also have an elevator access to that space. You can see to the left of the, the public stairs, a pathway that actually leads through the, the building to Park Place and the, the city's parking lot. But there's also within that, that walkway, a, a public elevator to get up to that second floor space. This is just a view from the, the back of that space from Park Place, giving you a little bit of an idea. You can see the doorway for that pedestrian connection through the building, but also giving you an idea of what the view is going to be like from the city parking lot and from Park Place. And a little bit in terms of the, the programming of the space, we've got it sort of set up here for sort of outdoor movies, which we think be a, a great use of the space. You know, we also think this is a great space, you know, for, you know, watch night parties and really integrating it into the activities that are already occurring in the city. Terms of the, the walkway, you know, one of the, the aspects of some of these public spaces that are being provided is making sure that there's public access through the building and that we're providing that connectivity. And so I just wanted to quickly just highlight the pedestrian access that goes from East Broad Street back to Park Place. And you can see sort of the, the top left picture is looking towards the city parking lot and you can see the, the grade change, you know, required to get from East Broad Street up to the, the city lot. The second pedestrian connection is, is part of the pocket park that we've got on the, the portion of the property adjacent to Lawton Street. You know, it's really designed as more of a passive space, trying to be respectful of the residential neighbors that, that we're next to, but also providing an amenity for them and any other members of the public that want to use it with seating areas, landscaping, hardscaping, but also, you know, connecting a pathway from Lawton Street to Park Place so that people have good access to Clarendon's, Argia's, State Theater, wherever else they want to go. Again, just trying to create some permeability through the site. We've talked about it a little bit, but this is just another example of what we anticipate for this public gathering space in the residential lobby. You know, as Maury mentioned, you know, this space will be open to the public to come in and use for gathering or to get a cup of coffee, sit and do work, you know, however people want to use it. And I think the experience that they've had at the Apollo in DC is that this is a space that becomes very popular with the community and, you know, we hope that it's the, the same thing here. We also talked about, you know, how it's co-used with Creative Cauldron and again, you know, we think it just, it creates a really nice synergy, you know, with that use and also when it's not being used by, by Creative Cauldron, you know, providing an opportunity for the community to come in and use the space for meetings or, or gathering. Just quickly, it's just a shot along East Broad Street, just to give you a feel for some of the pedestrian realm which again, we, we think of as public space. The, the design meets the city's streetscape standards in terms of the, the overall dimension and then also the clear space for the sidewalk. You know, we really think it's going to create a great pedestrian experience when combined with the retail programming that's provided. And again, you know, really an amenity to the, the public. Just another shot, looking a little bit further down in front of the, the residential space. Additionally, along North Washington Street, we have outdoor seating that's being proposed under that arcade, which is obviously a, a private outdoor space, but something that we think really adds to the vibrancy of the pedestrian realm along North Washington Street and really we think is going to add to, you know, how that, that pedestrian realm's going The architecture of the, the building, you know, we'll, we'll quickly run through this, but it's, you know, the, the architectural thought process that we went through was really trying to make sure we were engaging the surrounding community through some sensitively scaled massing, the pedestrian-friendly retail frontage, and really trying to make sure we match the right materials at the right scale to make sure that we were fitting in within the overall aesthetic for Falls Church. You know, for us, that includes creating the, the vibrant facades along North Washington Street and, and East Broad Street, residential balconies to try and activate that space and create some visual interest. And also providing quality materials for this building, including, you know, significant amount of masonry, you know, on, on all four sides of the project. Additionally, trying to divide the mass of the building so that it didn't come across as just one monolithic, you know, building, really breaking it up so it, it reads as two separate buildings rather than, than one large building. And also on the corner of Broad and Washington, I don't know if you may remember from the, the walkthrough that we did, but really setting that, that building back significantly farther than the current building is to create more of a pedestrian scale and feel at that corner so that you don't have the building sort of imposing upon the, the corner and the pedestrian realm. What you see here is the, the northern facade which has been something we, we've discussed extensively with staff and the city council. And we just wanted to highlight, you know, some of the, the changes that have been made over time on this facade. Again, you know, we focused on four-sided architecture, which we think is, is reflected, you know, on the northern facade which, you know, would technically be the, the back of the building, but I, you know, for us, we just look at it as another side of the building that, that we're designing. The design upgrades include adding additional masonry. You can see as the, the residential building sort of goes from the courtyard and turns the corner, that's been, more masonry's been added in that section of the, the property. So it's masonry all the way down. Additionally, as you go down the, the building, you can see the stairwell popping up and then as you get towards Lawton, that's all masonry as well. And then the bottom two floors all along the northern facade are also masonry. We've also worked on the design of this northern facade to make sure there's additional variation in the, the fenestration. We've added additional windows and we've added horizontal and vertical elements to really, I think, create some more uniformity with the, the rest of the design of the building and really upgrade the, the visuals. Just a shot quickly of the, the bottom two floors with the, the masonry and then this also shows, excuse me, the, the treatment of the city lot along the, the ground floor. We've added some, some planting there and added the, the curb line to sort of upgrade that, that space. Just quickly, environmental commitments, these are in the, the voluntary concessions. We do have a commitment to lead silver. We have a commitment to design the, the rooftop equipment to accommodate future solar panels on the site. We've provided for five vehicle charging stations in the, the garage. We're exceeding the, the minimum requirements for onsite stormwater management and we've been having discussions recently with city staff to come to a resolution on some additional stormwater improvements that can be made on the site. From a transportation standpoint, right now you've got three curb cuts on East Broad Street. We'll be consolidating that down to one curb cut, limiting, limiting conflict points in terms of people entering and exiting the site and also with pedestrians walking along East Broad Street. The parking garage that's being proposed, there's one story above grade which is screened on all four sides and then you've got, the rest of the parking is below grade. We've agreed in the voluntary concessions to open that up for paid public parking so anyone who wants to, to come in and park on this site can do so. We've got strategically located crosswalks and that's another place where we're still in discussions with city staff on, on the exact locations for some of those crosswalks, particularly across East Broad Street. Right now we have one crosswalk mid-block on East Broad Street and I think there's some discussion about whether it makes sense to add additional crosswalks there. The city parking lot, you know, we've heard from many people that, you know, it becomes a lot more difficult to get to and from the city parking lot once this project comes in. And so we're in the process of exploring the removal of a portion of the median at Park Place so that that would become a, a full access intersection. We think from our transportation review that that's a possibility and won't degrade traffic at that location, but it's something we're still discussing with city staff. In addition, we've got a commitment in the voluntary concessions related to bike share and making sure, excuse me, we're providing space on site for that. The Lawton Street frontage, I think as you, you heard tonight, you know, is something that we're continuing to, to work on. You know, we appreciate, you know, all of our neighbors being out tonight. We feel like we've worked fairly collaboratively and productively with them, you know, over the, the past two years on redesigns to Lawton Street. And again, we also appreciate the development services staff, you know, coming out to a lot of those meetings, providing design input as well. You know, the building form which we'll get to is the, the biggest change that's happened on Lawton in terms of stepping back the height and pulling the building back to provide increased setbacks. But there's also a number of commitments that have been made in the voluntary concessions to mitigate impacts on Lawton Street. And those include adding the crosswalk across Lawton Street, making sure there are no balconies or functioning balconies facing any of the, the Lawton Street neighbors, making sure that there's no outdoor seating at East Broad and Lawton to make sure that that frontage has a little bit of a softer feel and a more residential feel. Making sure that any transformers that are in the, the back of the property are appropriately screened. We've committed $20,000 for traffic calming on Lawton Street and we've also committed $10,000 to pay for a permit parking program on Lawton Street to make sure that there's no bleed over from our project onto, to Lawton and that the, the parking spaces there are, are protected for those residents. Terms of the, the form of the building, you know, we, we've worked, had, had a lot of meetings with the, the neighbors on, you know, the form and how this building relates to Lawton, the, the neighbors across Lawton Street and also our neighbors immediately adjacent at 107 Lawton, which is sort of on the, the top of the screen there. You know, it's really, has been an iterative process over the past two years in terms of scaling back that height and pulling back the building. You know, one of the things that, that we've always maintained is making sure we had, you know, an appropriate buffer between us and 107 Lawton. Right now there's a masonry wall and existing landscaping as part of this project. We'll actually be extending that masonry wall along the entire property line, keeping the mature vegetation that's there, but also adding additional vegetation to improve screening between us and, and that property. You know, the biggest and most recent change is essentially a flip of the, the building, which was a suggestion from the ambassador who lives at, at 107 Lawton in terms of the, the previous iterations of this plan actually had the courtyard in the front of the property on East Broad Street and the suggestion was flipping it so that, that courtyard is in the back and moving some of that density up to East Broad Street where it's more appropriate to, to be. And what you, what you end up with as, as part of that is really significantly stepped down, a really significant step down to 107 Lawton. So you can sort of see here the, the changes over time. The pink line is our original. March 2017 is the blue line and then the yellow line represents where we're at now. The, the, the sort of first line that we've got there in terms of a, of a step back is 42 feet from the property line. And that first part of the building rises up about 10 to 12 feet above grade at the back of the property, which we think is a, a really appropriate transition to the residential neighbor there. As you get to 60 feet, you go up to a 35-foot height, which is the, the maximum building height in the, the R1A district which we're adjacent to. And again, we don't get to that height until we're 60 feet away from the, the property line. And then as you get towards East Broad, you get to the, the full building height, which again, we think is a more appropriate transition to the, the residential neighbors. This is just a, a little bit of a visual representation of the changes that have happened over time. Again, the pink is the original submission. The blue was, that says October, it's actually March 2017. And then the yellow is where we're at today in terms of October 2017 showing the, the step backs from the 10 to 12 feet to the 35 feet then to the, the full height as we get to East Broad Street. In terms of the, the feel along Lawton Street, we've really tried to design this to have a much softer transition and a much quieter feel than you do on East Broad Street, North Washington Street. One of the things that, that we heard early on was a desire to save the street trees on East, on Lawton's and we've accomplished that. All the street trees that are there now will be preserved as part of this project. And we've done that by moving the sidewalk in the building back from the, the property line. Right now the, the building is set back 24 feet from the edge of curb, which we think is a pretty appropriate setback for a residential edge. You know, and again, I think trying to through the, the landscaping on this side of the property create a, a softer edge that really transitions well. So you'll be happy to know that we are finally done with our presentation. We think this is again, a great project, you know, for the city of Falls Church. We think it meets the objectives of the comprehensive plan, the small area plan, the design guidelines meets the streetscape standards. It also meets the, the special exception criteria for the, that's in the, the zoning ordinance. You know, we think the addition of the Class A office space, the solidification of the arts and entertainment district with the creative, the permanent home for Creative Cauldron and the addition of the ground floor uses really will enhance and add to the downtown area. And for those reasons, you know, we're really excited that this project is moving forward. We look to continue the, the conversations we've been having with our neighbors as we move through boards and commissions and move this, this project forward. And we certainly look forward to the feedback tonight from the planning commission. Thank you.
Thank you very much. That was very comprehensive. Let me turn on the lights here real quick.
Mr. Chair, before we start, could I ask a kind of an important question? Is there any way of checking to see that all of this presentation could be seen on TV? That comes from my experience of being home a couple times, watching it and all you heard was yak 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 and no visual.
Is it all yak yak yak? Yeah. Do we know if this is being covered? The, the pictures are being put on the screen?
I mean, seriously, it just happened.
Either way, can, can it be put online?
Yeah, the presentation should be online.
I think the man behind the door would know.
Right. Well, how about in any event?
Ruffer mics.
Let's just make sure the, the presentation's put online if it's not, if it hasn't been already.
But still, you know, if this is a public meeting and people are watching it at home.
Is there angle? Can the cameras angle?
Well, I hope, I hope it's on screen. If not, we'll make sure it'll be available.
We just need to, should have asked that to begin with.
I have several questions, but I am going to turn it over to my fellow commissioners. Mr. Dujon.
Yeah, I have some questions and also some comments. The first question I have is, you know, there was a, there's a comprehensive list of things that were issued. of things that were issues that were brought up by the neighbors, and I hope that you have the list, you know, somebody was recording the list, so at least you can go back and review them, make sure that, you know, those are taken care of in the next presentation. Um, and that was, that's just my comment. But I do have, I do have a, another comment, which is, which has to do with the architecture of the building itself. The office building, really have no issues with. It's great, it looks nice, it's a nice classy building. However, when you look at the apartment building, the apartment building is, it's very monolithic. I think it needs to, the massing needs to be looked at again. And the reason why I say that is when I look at it, everything is flat. And when you look at it also from the streetscape, the, you know, even though you have glass and glass is translucent, as we all know, it's still ha, it's a, it's, you know, it's this wall of glass, which is probably about 90 feet. And so, if I'm walking in front of it, is, you know, there's really no comfort, you know, you feel as if you're walking along this sea of glass, which, so you, you do need some, you know, some kind of massing, some architectural indentations and all that, you know, on the storefront. I think that, that would really make this project nice. Other issues that I have, uh, includes the treatment of the facade itself. The white or the gray piece that you have on top of the building kind of makes it look cheap. I think if you looked at, you know, I, I don't know what material you have, but it, typically, people use either ifus or panels, but the color of the panel with the brick doesn't really seem to, I mean, it cheapens the building when you look at the apartment building versus the office building. You know, it makes this piece look cheap. And then when you look at the theater building, the theater building looks really nice, creative. But apartment buildings seem to be like, you know, the child in the middle that is less taken care of. So, I, I would love to see you do some, some more work on the apartment building. Uh, you talked about the grocery store. How do you access, how, how do trucks access the grocery store, if you do get the grocery store eventually?
It's a good question. Um, and I guess for clarification, you know, we're looking at a specialty grocer, so a, a pretty small use, 6,000 square feet. Um, right now, there are, there are internal loading docks inside the garage, uh, that are right behind the, the retail space. And so, the, the trucks would, would enter the garage and, and pull into the, the loading spaces there.
And the entry will be from Broad Street, right?
Yeah, from Broad Street.
I mean, it shouldn't, I, I wouldn't, I would, I wouldn't advise it coming from any other place than either Broad or Washington. Yeah. And then, um, you know, basically, I, I would say just, you know, pay attention to what the neighbors are talking about, because I think they really brought up some really good issues, you know, the height of the building, the massing, um, I find issues with. And, you know, when you come back, I'd like to see those issues addressed. So, thank you.
Thank you.
Can I ask, uh, Quafer, does that mean you want it to be shorter and less dense? I just want us to give specific guidance.
Yeah, I think, I think what I'm looking at is a less massive building. If you can, if you can redesign the, the facade of the apartment building, make it a little bit more, you know, um, how should I, make it a little bit more softer. I think it'll be, I think when you, when you're able to, to be creative with the massing, the height doesn't become an issue, because sometimes when you're walking in front of these buildings, you, you don't really see the height. What you see is, you know, where your, where your eyes go, uh, you know, like the 10 to maybe 20-foot level. The, the massing doesn't be, you know, the height of the building doesn't become an issue when you're in front of the building. If you look at the Harris Theater Building, for example, when you walk in front of it, you don't really, uh, see the, the, the height of the building itself. It doesn't look as massive, because the treatment has a much softer edge to it than what I'm looking at here. So, I think that's the guidance that I would give.
Any other comments? Steed?
Yeah, I just want to follow up. I think it was a really good thought to move the courtyard to the other side, because it does, if, if, on the, um, Lincoln Building on, um, 29, that courtyard was aligned with the neighbors on Tanner Hill, across the street, which are in little, you know, old house, old farmhouse-style homes. And so, it does make a big difference to what they're seeing. But I think there is a point now that now you have, you don't have the, that break in the front anymore, along the streets. So, one of the things is maybe, I mean, there's a whole section here, and I, and I know that this isn't the final architectural renderings, I mean, obviously, there's still a long way to go, but like, one of the things, and there's just not a change in color. So, if you look at, um, like the Pearson, some of the places, there's definitely a feeling that there's different sections, and you don't feel this on the apartment side. You feel like it's just, it is basically one big building. So, I don't, I don't know if there's maybe some change up in the brick color on some sections of it. Um, I agreed with you, and at least up there, the tops of the building, the, the white did not look good. So, I don't know what material that would be, because, I mean, again, you don't, we, we're not at that point where you're giving us materials.
Yep.
So, so, yeah, but I mean, maybe as, when we move to the materials, you know, that would be something that would be dealt with. So, but that, that concerned me. I do think that in the, um, staff report, the, our Attachment 7, which was the report they gave you on November 8th, that the staff did a great job of listing the key issues. And Ms. Rusi had mentioned them before. And obviously, I think all these things have to be dealt with. Um, and some of it, like the public access, that they're just looking for clarification in the VCs, easy things, but, but we shouldn't have this list come back to us again. Um, we should be, have, have resolution of some of these issues here. But, but some of it's the same thing we're talking about, is it, and they're talking about the north facade, having it broken up more, um, you know, the public access being laid out, um, more detail on public parking. So, it's great for you to say there's public parking, but what public parking is it, and what time, and more specifics? I, I think these are very easy, most of these are very easy for you guys to deal with. Um, so, on the on-street parking on Broad Street, and we've, I know in the past, we've talked about it, I mean, are you guys, are, is this a serious thing, or should we just be putting this away for now, or?
Uh, I guess a couple of things. One is, we obviously anticipate that when we come back in January, hopefully, all of those key issues for, for city staff are, are taken care of, and
Right.
You know, we're, we're already starting to work with them to, um, work through the, the issues in more detail. Um, the on-street parking, um, we had initially proposed that. Um, we thought it actually was a, a pretty good idea, um, in terms of creating some separation, uh, from Broad Street to the pedestrian realm. I think the, the feedback that we got initially was, yeah, it seems like a, a good idea, but, you know, I, I don't know that the city staff was ready to, um, endorse it or, uh, go the other way at that point. Um, I think the feedback that we got in the most recent set of comments, um, was, let's get rid of that, and we're, we're fine with that.
Okay.
I mean, it, you know, it was a suggestion, we thought it, it, you know, made some sense, we included it as an alternative, but it's not a, a key design element or something that we think
Has to happen.
You know, has a huge impact on the project.
Well, I mean, we, I mean, it's in our area plan for this area that we would like to start seeing street parking.
Yeah.
Um, I know someone talked earlier about that, when we talk about narrowing lanes, we should be narrowing lanes, but we, but we really should be, because
Yeah.
I mean, I work in Old Town, and Old Town, Alexandria, they keep the lanes narrow on purpose, because people can't drive fast then.
Yep.
And we don't want people driving fast on Route 7, and so narrowing the lanes and having on-street parking scares people. They slow down, because they don't want to hit someone.
Yep.
And, um, because right now, like, that part of East Broad, from Washington Street to Seven Corners, people use it as a racetrack. So, as someone who lives along there and has tried to walk my kids down that street, it's a very scary street. So, to me, narrowing, I, I, I can understand if you dropped it, but I, I'm good with if we narrow the lanes and, and put on-street parking, I think it's a great thing, but I think if it complicates it too much, I can understand why you're letting it go.
And, and just to, uh, not to interrupt, I apologize, um, but just to, to respond quickly on that, um, you know, we are, we are planning on getting rid of the, the on-street parking. One thing we are still looking at is creating a, a drop-off area, particularly in front of the, the residential portion of the site.
That would be great.
So that there's still an opportunity for, you know, somebody getting out of an Uber or a, you know, somebody delivering a pizza that they can, you know, pull in on a short-term basis.
Yeah, and I think that's a good idea, because the Lincoln did that along the side that's going to be where the Target is, because people will drop off people, and it's nice to have a place to do that. So, one of the things, though, and we're, we're hearing it from some of the people who came, talking about, and, and obviously, the council's concerned about the type of retail we're going to get. Um, with Target coming in, does that give us a little bit more salesy kind of ability to bring in some better retail?
You know, I think that, um, you know, the, this project is, is, it's just different than some of the other projects that have come in that have one big tenant on the ground floor.
Right, right.
You know, it's
And I'm not looking for that, but I'm just wondering.
Yeah, no, and I guess
Because one of the things we kept being told is that we haven't brought in the retail that would bring in more retail.
Yeah.
And to me, it's, it's having the Target come in, and then also, we're going to have the, um, Aldis come in on the other side, that we are starting to build some, some larger, and, and I'm not saying that you have to have larger, but I'm just saying, is that, is that like a tipping point for us, maybe?
Well, we, I mean, we, we think that this site is a great retail site, um, just in general, with the number of cars that are, are going by on a daily basis on Broad and on, on Washington. Um, you know, the only reason I brought up the, uh, the issue of the, sort of the larger format was, um, you know, I think it's, it's easy to kind of get stuck in, well, who's the tenant, you know, going to be? And, um, you know, this project is just set up a little bit differently in terms of the, the ground floor space, that you've got a lot more restaurants and, um, you, you have a specialty grocer that we're, we're trying to get into this space, but it's a, it's a smaller niche space. And so, um, you know, there's not sort of a Target or Harris Theater or somebody out there that we can say, you know, that's going to be the, the tenant
Right. I understand that part.
For that space, but I, I guess getting back to your point, you know, I think any, you know, building up of the, the retail in the city helps.
Could, could we have more retail space? Because now you're saying our retail space is too small for a commitment of someone, like one, because I don't think we're saying you have to commit every space. Um, you know, obviously, the Lincoln had a commitment and lost it, but we got the Target, which I think is going to be better anyway.
Right.
But, and they're still trying to fill their restaurant space, but maybe our retail space isn't, is it lined, is it laid out well? Is it, is it the kind of retail space we can fill? Because we had that problem in another building, where the byroom, where the retail space is on the street, which is great, but the parking garage is very far away.
Right.
And so, people didn't want that spot, because people would have to walk a certain amount. I mean, I, I think it was silly, because we're talking about walking less than a block, but
Yeah.
It, it affected the people who wanted to do a retail contract. Do you think the retail space that you're designing, is it, are people able to get to it easily from the parking? Is it retail space that you think is large enough then?
Yeah, so we think that, I mean, the, the key for the retail space, and Maury can jump in too, is, you know, making sure you've got the, the proper depth for the, the retailer to go in, and then having that, that convenience parking. Um, the way that this is set up, you know, the, the retail space is designed for, you know, the current retail market, and we've got a retail consultant that we've been working with, um, you know, looking at the design of the space to make sure that it, it is marketable, um, and also looking at potential, you know, future tenants and starting to, to market the space already. Um, so we, we've been very cognizant of designing that space to make sure that it's a successful retail space, both from the dimensions of the space and how it's designed, but also where the parking is. And so, the design of this, you actually, you have the parking essentially right behind where the, the retail is, and then there's convenient access to get from the parking straight out onto, um, East Broad or North Washington and get to that, that retail space.
Yeah, and I mean, signage is important, because I think in, um, the Pearson building, um, I think it's hard for some people to figure out where they come out. The, the parking is right behind it, but it's, if you don't know to go through, like, the lobby section, you don't know.
I agree with that.
But, um, okay, I, I guess I should let other people ask questions, more stuff, but that's enough.
This is Hockenberry.
Okay. Excuse me, I think I'm somewhat losing my voice, which probably people would be very happy about, but, um, some questions about Creative Cauldron. Uh, I'm just overjoyed at the thought of having it built out, because I was on council when that was first came in, and we thought, wow, and then the build-out of it was so expensive and, and was really detrimental to the whole project. Um, I am concerned, however, you know, uh, Pearson Square just got a new owner, and I think they went to closing today or just recently. And, uh, so Creative Cauldron will be in, uh, conducting, uh, some processes to see if they can get their lease extended. And so, you know, they would have to probably get their lease extended for at least three years with this space. And, you know, with the fact that it might be a new owner, now whether they're going to be happy to have this space in their building or not, that could really increase their rent. So, I'm just kind of concerned. On one hand, we are going to be happily, you know, thinking of approving a spot for it permanently, but yet, it could be driven out of business before then. And I know that there's been some thinking of, would there be any possibility of some help along the way from this development to get it, keep it going till they can move? Uh, and, uh, so I think that's very important, particularly with the, um, uh, the whole uses, and saying that if it's not established within six months after issuance, uh, the certificate of occupancy, it could be reused. So, that sounds like a real good escape out of, out of the, uh, out of the puffers, and that I am concerned about.
Yeah.
And I would like to have more, uh, reassurance that everything will be done to make sure that this is going to be a transition, because, you know, we're just not moving in there, because it's going to take quite a while to get this built.
So, I, I guess a, a couple of things. One is, you know, our, our hope is that by the time we come back to the city council for, um, second reading, that we'll have the lease signed with, with Creative Cauldron, so we'll have much more certainty in terms of all the, the things that, that you're talking about, in terms of what the, the commitments are that, you know, everyone will have a, an understanding of. Um, in terms of the, the space they're in right now, um, you know, part of the reason we're pushing so hard for our project to, to move forward is, you know, we recognize the, the time constraints that Creative Cauldron has, and, you know, as Broad and Washington, um, you know, goes through the, the process, you know, it does have an impact on the survivability of, of Creative Cauldron and making sure that they're ready to move into the space, um, you know, when this project is, uh, approved, hopefully, and, and constructed. Um, so it's certainly something that, that we're aware of, and we've
I think that's all very, very important, because saying that this is going to happen will not if Creative Cauldron in the process dies, or goes out of business, which would be a real shame. And for everybody that thinks that this is not a money producer, a revenue producer, uh, you know, there's so many, uh, reports and everything, that any of this type of development will bring in people, and then it will help all the restaurants around it and all the spaces around it and everything. So, uh, it is, you know, it's a tremendous asset to the city now, and it's, uh, so I just want to make sure it's protected with this promise along the way. Uh, the other thing I'm really concerned about is the access to, uh, that, what is it, Park Avenue, what, is that
Park Place.
Park Place? And, uh, right now, the, you've got access through the Robinson property to the back, to the, uh, parking lot, and you've got the, if you're traveling north, you can make a right into that. Uh, well, actually, you can make a right into the, uh, parking lot by our Geas, or right up on Park Place to go in that way. So, with the, this building, there will be only one access, which would be going north only, uh, on, uh, North Washington, which seems like that, you know, if we're going to also be concerned about a new project, we also need to be concerned about preserving the other ones. And you've got State Theater and two restaurants, and I would not like to see them strangled to death by non-access. So, uh, I know there's a median strip, strip in front of that. Um, you know, the big thing is, is it's so close to, uh, traffic light already, that that would be, you know, difficult, you know, for any left-hand turns or, but something's got to be worked out there, or else those businesses are likely to be strangled, and that would not be of, you know, anything that we would like to see. Um, I am very pleased, uh, you know, about, you know, I know you've got the 6% affordable housing, I would always like to have more, that would be 18 approximate units, uh, that would be, uh, proportioned. I think that the staff did ask for different types of units instead of proportionate in their requests, uh, having more of the smaller units and, and more of the bigger units. having more of the smaller units and, and more of the bigger units. But, um, and the biggest thing there is that it's 60% AMI, which is really, really good, because we've had problems, I'm liaison to the Housing Commission, and we've had problems with our two new, uh, developments at Harris Teeter and Lincoln, that sometimes even the 100% of AMI, which is average, you know, median in, uh, income in the area, people can't afford that either, and everything else is way over that. So, 60% is really good, and a couple of times, we've negotiated to have some of the, uh, units cut down to that. So, that is a good percentage. Along with that, uh, I've often wondered, um, you know, if you're charging each unit for a parking space, would it be possible to charge 60% of that for the, you know, make that proportional? Because, uh, going in and to a, a affordable unit and then having a big parking fee plopped on you also is not very good. So, maybe that might be a new idea that we could look at, to have that percentage be the same of, you know, of that. And I know you have all the amenities and everything. Is there any thinking of building to, uh, the future of Evergoing Condo? I know it started out right now as apartments, but I know I've heard some talk about perhaps being condo, and you would have to build specifically toward that, uh, aspiration.
Yeah, I mean, we, we've explored, um, doing this as condo, and it's, it's not something we think, um, makes sense for, for this site and, and probably not for, for Insight. You know, they're, they're not a condo developer, they're a residential developer.
It has to have certain prerequisites and certain papers and everything to register as a condo. Pearson Square is still registered as a condo, so they can go back. And, you know, that was unfortunate with the, uh, with the downturn of the economy, that they had to go to apartments, and it was something that was just beyond a lot of control. And it's been a consternation to the city and to, uh, a lot of the people. So, if that could, you know, just be looking at that, because you don't know how the market's gonna be changing, you know, there, you know, for a while, condo was the biggest and only thing, then it's apartments, and now they're saying, hey, you know, let's, look back at the condo situation. Uh, as far as the parking garage with, uh, with the charging stations, are there gonna be charging stations in both the public part of the parking garage and in the residential?
You know, I don't, I don't know that we've gotten to that level of detail on where those charging stations are gonna be.
There's parking, charging in Harris Teeter, but it's only for the residential. And having a, you know, electric car, you know, I'm always thinking about that.
I mean, I, I think we're, yeah, we're, we're completely open to, you know, I think whatever the, the suggestion is for the best way to set up the, the charging stations.
Good. I'm very, one thing I was very delighted about, and I asked in the, when we did the walk-around, about keeping the existing trees unlocked. You could never get that kind of growth back, and those are all very, very lovely trees. And so, I think that, that was really good. In the retail pass-through, is that gonna just be like a tunnel? Or are there gonna be any, uh, windows into other spaces? Or, uh, you know, entrances into, another side entrance into a restaurant? Or windows into a restaurant, or windows into a retail space? Because otherwise, it's kind of boring just going through a tunnel.
Yeah, the intention is for the depth of the retail, that there would be storefront glass or some sort of glass looking into those spaces, but then you get into the parking garage beyond that. So, at that point, obviously, there wouldn't be another parking field to say, yes.
And only one last thing on the, um, on the transportation plan. Something I mentioned at the walkthrough, and people might think I'm totally crazy, but is there any way that we could consider, uh, a four-way stop of traffic to have diagonal crossing?
Um, I, I don't know that it's anything we've, we've looked at.
I mean, I know it's done in some areas.
That's B dot.
Yeah, well, it's, yeah, but it's also, you know, we do own the streets there. But I'm, I'm just saying, it'd be so much easier to have a downtown crossing where people could just go where they want to go, and everything stops. I'm just, just saying as a, anyway, that's, that's my list. We could have a pool table in the middle or something.
Fair enough, open to suggestions, it sounds like.
I'll go quick, I mean, this, a lot of my, a lot of my comments, I think, you know, it's probably when you go towards the end, I don't want to be repetitive, but, I mean, overall, I think the project has continued to improve since, since, you know, as I've watched it and as it's come through city council, you know, to date. I would say I'd see the on-street parking go. I, I mean, I can understand the challenges with it. It's kind of like a dream of mine, one day, to have on-street parking in the city on our major commercial corridors, because everyone knows in any really successful downtown place you've ever been, anywhere in the world, there was probably on-street parking, if you think back to, you know, and I've always had a dream that we could have it here one day. So, when I heard it was possible here, that it might be possible, I was like, wow! And then, I should have known better. But if, if it's not totally dead, I would say, continue to think about it, because it's amazing what that, it sounds so simple, it's so trivial, but it really isn't. If you, like I said, if you think about the separation, it provides some, the, the high volume of traffic on those roads, what it does to the pedestrian environment, but anyhow, I'll get off the soapbox on that. The Lawton Street frontage has also improved over time dramatically. I was really concerned about that when I first saw it. Obviously, the neighbors who spoke tonight, their concerns are legitimate. There clearly are continued concerns, uh, that need to be taken very seriously on working, working, uh, towards a compromise there. I feel like, but the, clearly, some, there's already been some compromise, and so, let's continue to work on that. The comment about the architectural differences between the office and the, and the residential is also very valid. You want the buildings to relate to each other well, but also, right, the massing issue, I think you hit it on the head, both of you mentioned that, comparing it to, you know, to Harris Teeter. You know, that building, how that massing is broken up very significantly, and it really affects how you perceive the height. And the length of, the lack of a, of a retail anchor, you know, that's a kind of a, a problem, but I don't know, this is maybe, maybe it is a different kind of project, you're going for a different type of, of retail mix here. It's just, it's always, you know, and in some ways, I guess, it's, it's nice to be able to, it's sexier to sell a big anchor, but if that falls apart, then you risk disappointing people. It's a mixed bag, but if you can get a good mix here, I think that would be, you know, just as good as, as one great anchor.
I guess just on the, the retail, um, I, I would suggest looking at the, the retail mix at the Apollo, the, the project that Insight did, um, in DC, um, and look at the, the retail mix there. You know, that, that was, um, I think shows the thoughtfulness that, that Insight takes in terms of finding tenants that are, you know, interesting, unique to, uh, the, the places that they're going in. And, you know, provides a, a good example for what they, they'd like to achieve here.
Sure, yeah, I mean, if the quality is high, it can be just as great as having one, you know, you know, sort of name-brand anchor, so to speak. So, I'll, we'll see how that evolves. I guess no one's really talked about, you know, your TDM, um, stuff. Is there, is there, is there talk about any type of, you know, shuttle to East Falls Church Metro? Is that, or are you gonna rely just on Metro bus? I mean, what is, what's been the thoughts on that?
Yeah, I, I think we're, we're still working through, uh, the TDM program, um, with, with city staff. I, I don't know that a shuttle is in the cards here, just based on the, the scale of the, the project. Yep, I mean, you, you know how much shuttles, um, sort of cost, um, sort of on an annual operating, um, basis, and you've got to have a certain scale to, to make that work. But, you know, I think we are committed to making sure that we're transit accessible. You know, we're close enough to the East Falls Church Metro to make, make sure that-
I mean, there is Bus Act, I mean, there is Bus Service.
Yeah, there's, there's good bus access, I think, um, you know, there's good bike, um, access. And, you know, frankly, I've, I've done that walk, and it's not a bad walk to, to get to the metro.
Yeah, no, what is it, is it about a mile, mile and change?
Yep.
I looked at the retail of the Apollo. It's on H Street, right?
Yep.
Okay, it has the Whole Foods.
Well, it has the Whole Foods, but the other, the other stuff that's, that's there.
But I'm just saying, I, I don't know if there's more retail, but all it lists is the Whole Foods with the giant anchor. The, a coffee shop and a bike shop, okay?
The, the website is, is in the process of being updated, there's a lot more that isn't.
Is there more in that? Okay.
It is anchored by a Whole Foods, but for all the other-
We already have that.
Anywhere from 1,000 feet to 2,500 foot local operators and the type of things that we, that's what we're covering. Those types of operators that we want.
I, I did not mean to imply that the Whole Foods was, um-
Not an anchor?
We've been-
The other, I think the, the other retail and-
We've been burned on that twice.
People put a website unless you know what's on it.
Well, yeah.
All right, I mean, just overall, and then just one final comment. I mean, obviously, the mix of residential versus retail, I mean, it's come, it's come down a bit to be more in favor of the non-residential. I mean, any, you know, attempting to push in that direction just goes a long way, um, you know, towards, you know, again, the con-plan goals and, and, uh, you know, towards the net fiscal impact. Although I, I do think the bedroom mix of what you have overall is, is generally in the right, you know, kind of mix as far as minimizing burden on schools and, and, you know, sort of encouraging, like, the young millennial type of population that, you know, we're looking, or empty nesters that we're looking to kind of encourage in these types of developments, so. I think that's it for me.
Great, Mr. Stevens?
Yeah, I have a few comments, but in light of the hour, try, to try to keep it short. I think we heard a lot of, uh, very thoughtful comments tonight, especially from the neighbors, which indicates that both we and especially our friends on city council still have some, some more work to do. One thing I wanted to address is the higher population density, which a lot of people look at as a negative. I think it's actually a positive, because that's the fuel to attract retail businesses.
Yep.
And, uh, once we have a good set of retail businesses, our residences will be able to do, meet more of their needs without having to drive to someplace else. It's a term called economics of place, uh, that's becoming more prominent throughout, uh, the circles that, that study these things. And I think you need a, a project of this size in order to accomplish that. A lot of things that are, that are benefited through this project, we, uh, we certainly are, are, would benefit from the funding to the schools, uh, support to the arts sector, which others have talked about, contribution to the parks, the library, affordable housing, uh, as much as possible to deference to the concerns of the residents of Lawton Street. But where we're weak is on the environmental side. Lead silver, as far as I'm concerned, is entry level for a project of this size, and I would hope that we could strive, push a little harder to, to make this a lead gold, uh, project, given that its stature or where it's located in the city. Provisions on solar are weak. They talk about aggregating, uh, rooftop mechanical systems. I'm not sure how the city would enforce that to make sure that provision is met as part of the voluntary concessions. And I think some of the language in that section probably could be tightened up. I really don't anticipate that you'll be selling electricity with any solar system that you might put up to the grid. That gets involved in wholesale economics and PPAs with Dominion and so forth. And I think what you really, you're gonna have one or two systems. You're gonna have a grid-tied, uh, net-metered system, uh, or you're gonna have a grid disconnected with, uh, battery backup. But either of those systems will produce electricity that you'll use onsite, and you won't have to sell that to, uh, and get involved with all that complexity, uh, to sell to, to the grid. The EV charging stations is a positive piece of what you're offering. You mentioned five, plus five conduit. Mr. Cash mentioned another possibility of funding from Tesla, and I hope that, uh, that, that your folks will be able to take advantage of that. There's a lot of people eager to see EV charging stations, uh, you know, distributed throughout, and this is a perfect location to do it, so I hope you take advantage of that, and that's it.
Thank you, Mr. Rankin, were you have any comments you'd like to add?
Oh, I've got some, yeah. I'll start off with some quick ones, like, uh, I agree with pretty much everything Tim said. In particular, I think that capital contributions for the schools are important, and, um, it was nice to see. I don't think we've gotten a specific per-unit contribution to the parks and the library before, so that, while not significant, is nice to see. Um, I do have a few thoughts. As Ms. Hockenberry said, I think that curb cut on Washington to get into Park Place is, like, critical, like, can't approve the project till we know that will happen. So, I would pursue that with all of your efforts, just because I don't, that, that really screws up the rest of that block without that. Like, if you were coming from Arlington, you'd have to drive across Broad, go down to, like, the Falls Church, turn around, drive up whatever that little road is, it would, it would just be, it'd be a bad news.
It's just terrible.
This is sort of a question for maybe the city people, but do we know, uh, do we have any data on the fiscal impact difference between three-bedroom apartments and two-bedroom with den apartments? And if we don't, could we see if we can rustle that up? And similarly, I think I read somewhere that there was some preference for the ADU, the affordable dwelling units, to be either on the, uh-
Right, studio or two-bedroom.
-studio side or on the larger side, and I, I don't, which I think sounds compelling, but how does that impact the fiscal impact, uh, model? I don't know if we can tease that out. There was some talk, and we, this comes up all the time, and there, you know, you guys would be sort of breaking new ground here. If you could figure out a, an affordable retail-type program, whether it's some, you know, X percent under-market rent for 10 years on a lease, or some ability to do, build out, uh, I, I don't know, I'm a, I'm a small business owner, I've gone through many leases and build-outs, and it's, it's, it's tough. And, um, I think, you know, a lot of people wish, oh, I wish we knew exactly what was gonna go into this thing, and I want it to be a mom-and-pop, and I don't want it to be a big retail. But it's like, okay, the thing's not gonna exist for three years. Who's gonna sign a lease? Who, what mom-and-pop business can sign a lease for something that won't exist for three years and then pay market rent and all these other things? So, I think, you know, you, you have three options. You get some, somebody like Harris Teeter that can sign up, but even that doesn't always work. Look at the grocery store that doesn't exist at Turner Hill. You can do what you guys are basically doing, which is, hey, we're gonna put retail here, and we're gonna try to fill it, and it'll eventually get filled, we don't know. Or you could come up with some creative way to say, hey, we're gonna, we're gonna have some part of this retail set aside in some affordable way that we know will be able to be filled in three years when it's online with a local business. I don't know how to do that. I know the EDA has thought about that in the past, so that would be cool.
Chamber of Commerce has too.
I think, I, I'm a little confused, uh, I, I was reading the complicated language about the retail and how many square feet would be reserved for that versus that, and the grocer, which I know is interested, I, first of all, the math didn't necessarily add up to me, but mostly what I'm concerned about is if we're saying, hey, we want 6,000 square feet for a specialty grocer, and you guys will go for that for two years, and then after two years, then you can go do other stuff. I'm worried about that having a, ad, you know, inadvertently preventing us from getting other retail that might want to use, you know, there's not a ton of retail here, and, and I think you guys are definitely gonna do a restaurant. So, I don't know who's driving that 6,000-foot towards a grocer and why the two-year thing is in there, but I'd love to have there be some way to let you guys out of that if there's a better thing that comes along. You know what I mean? Like, I don't want to pass up a really good thing, because we really want some specialty grocer, but... And then, um, I, here's the big one, which I'm sure you guys have thought about. This project would be, I think, without a doubt, uh, exceptional and all that fluffy language, if it had more office space. And I, I know adding a floor or two on top of the office building, well, first of all, does anyone know if, does height come into play there? Because I would waive that in a second to get another floor or two. Now, I assume parking comes into play, and you guys aren't necessarily sure if you can write it up, but I, I don't know, I would love to, I, I'm telling you, 10 years from now, parking is not gonna be an issue. It's gonna be Ubers and automatic Ubers, and we're gonna be like, what do we do with all this underground parking? Why do we build that? So, yeah, so I just, I feel like if there was some way to give you guys something to put another floor in that office building, it would help a lot.
And I will say, um, you know, we, we've heard that comment, uh, before, and we, we've actually gone through the, the analysis to figure out, um, you know, whether that's something that, that we could do. You know, I think, you know, part of what we're trying to accomplish with the office is making sure that it's sized for where we think the, the market is, and part of that is making sure that it's successful. You know, I think that for us, for the city, um, proving the, the office market at this location is, is vital. I mean, that's what's gonna drive future office coming into the city. And we just don't think that the market is there for that additional floor. You know, if we're getting ready to come forward with building plans, and the market has changed, and we think we can, uh, come back with another floor, you, you better believe that we will be right back in front of the, the planning commission.
And I definitely understand the challenges. I'm a small business owner, I actually rent two floors in the building catty-corner from this site. And I know for, we were in the tax analyst building, the closest thing to a Class A space in the city, and that's sort of like Falls Church Class A. And the rest of the city, no offense, I, you know, I, I'm in some, it's all dumpy office buildings, so... And I'm sure a banker would say, oh, there's no market for it, because there's empty office buildings all around the region, but I, I, I'm telling you, you build an extra floor in there, you'll rent it, it's not gonna be a problem. We got doctors and lawyers and, and accountants and psychologists and people that are looking for good space, and they don't want to go to Tysons, they don't want to go into Arlington. And I know you'll never convince a banker of that, but if you guys came out with an extra floor, I think it'd be really hard for us to not approve it pretty quickly, and I think you would fill it up. I might even take a floor myself. Two very minor things.
We'll put you down for, uh, one floor of, of office.
Sure, if you give me, uh, if you give me the affordable rate, that's great. Two quick things. Two quick things. One, I would love for the tree beds to not be raised. I'm tired of tripping over those. If you've ever come to any of these meetings, you know, I mention this every time, but I've seen some renderings where they're flat, and some where they're raised. I only accept raised if there's like 20 feet of clear sidewalk, no tables, no signs, because otherwise I'm pushing the stroller, you know, you got people walking the trip, and it's, the trees can survive. I've seen it all around, every time I see a flat one, I go, wow, that tree's alive, it's unbelievable. All right, and then this is a final one, this is personal. On the third page of the voluntary concessions and prohibited things, this is minor, but mentally retarded is not a commonly-used term these days. I guess the folks don't want these handicap people living there.
Which one is that?
It's number seven on the prohibited list. If you could strike mentally retarded, I would appreciate that.
So I...
And that may be a commonly-used term, I would still appreciate that you strike it.
Yeah, I think that we actually just took that from...
Honestly, I would let those folks live there, but I...
That's actually cut and paste, but I think from the zoning ordinance.
I know, and maybe we should update our zoning ordinance, but I personally would love that. But otherwise, I mean, I think overall, like everyone said, I mean, I think this is a tough project for lots of reasons. I think, I know, I'm beating the drum here, but a little more office space would be key. But I also think without that curb cut, I think it's really hard to see how it works.
Well, and I, you know, and I...
Which I know isn't totally on you guys, but...
Well, I think we would love to get rid of that curb cut, and we've had our transportation consultants look at it, we think it works. The next step for us is just talking to the city and making sure that everyone's on board with getting rid of that median for park and turning that into a full...
Because to me, the alternative is an internal vehicular access to that parking lot, which I know is hard because of the grade. So if it's not going to be that, you've got to be able to get in onto Park Place from Arlington.
We agree. I think if we can find a way to do it, we want to do it.
And I would just say, I think it's, for me personally, it's basically a requirement.
Yep.
So, that's all I got.
Could I just follow up on that a minute? With that whole situation, staging is going to be a mess with this project. And again, it's going to, I don't want to hurt the businesses we already have. And I don't know what can be done about it, but I just see some real problems coming along with that, with the two restaurants and State Theater with staging, because I would imagine you probably want to use the parking lot. And so there's got to be something put in place, or, you know, we cannot afford to, I've used this word before, strangle those businesses because of this project.
Yeah, we agree, and we've got, Prop 17I requires us to come up with prior to the issuance of any demolition or building permits, to come up with a construction staging plan and traffic plan that's approved by the city manager.
Staging in this area, you have more residential. Certainly with Harris Teeter and Lincoln, we didn't have those problems, you know, as much, a little bit with the townhouses, but on Annandale, but this is going to be a major staging problem.
All right, well, let me put a quick bow on this work session here. The first thing I want to say is I really like where this project has come. I think it'll be a huge asset to the community, and I'm really excited about all that offers, and it is a massive improvement to what we have there right now. So I'm a big supporter of it. That said, I think the comments here are, were well-thought-out and important to listen to. We heard from the community, they had a lot of comments as it related to, you know, how they're going to interact with the building, and that'll be some of the, those comments are some of the things I'll be looking at really closely upon the next revision, so I hope you do something to address some of those issues. I think that comments about the massing along Broad Street are really relevant and will make a big difference. I think we didn't really talk about the green space that much. I'm not, I'm assuming it meets what our requirements are, but it was, it seemed minimal to me, and, you know, raised and artificial in the way that it was put together, so I'm concerned about the green space. And I have some concerns about the flow of traffic within the building. The two entrances, how that's going to hold up the traffic on Broad Street, people making left turns. At some point, you're going to have to make a left into this property, and it seems to me it's going to have to happen on Broad, and that concerns me. I'm a big supporter, it sounds like you guys are, of making this adjustment on Route 29, and hopefully we can all work together to help facilitate that, and whatever the city can do. I don't know how much is in our hands versus in VDOT's hands, but I'm concerned about the flow. I don't want to go into it at this hour, but once in the garage, it's not clear to me how people are moving around in their cars. I'm also not clear about how people are moving from the residential building to the office building, if in fact that's possible, or if you're going into the garage and they're truly separate, or you have to go through the second-floor courtyard, or whatever floor that is. I'm just, or if you're trying to even promote that, I'm just not clear on the flow of humans and vehicles within the building. And, so those are some of the things I'm going to have, you know, some questions about. And that's really it. I mean, everybody sort of said what I wanted to say. But overall, it has come a long way. It is really, I am a fan of what you're doing, and I'm pleased that we're going to add some, you know, some significant and high-quality office space as a well-needed commodity here. I would certainly support additional floor here as well, but I also think it's really important that we prove that the Falls Church market is, can support this, and maybe it's the next building that has the additional office space as a result of your efforts. But anything you can do to increase the commercial and retail space associated with this would be welcomed by me. I think Mr. Rankin's comment about that specialty grocer is accurate, why we would hold this out. I don't know if it's a remnant from other proposals, but I see no need to have this, like, two-year waiting period on that, 6,000 square feet. If other, if other high-quality retailers are interested, it's not a requirement, that concession is not a requirement by my standards. We have plenty of grocery stores that have come into this market in the last two years, and one coming again, so to hold out for a specialty one seems to me an undue burden on you. But I am pleased with the mix of the units, and again, overall, the project. So I appreciate what you put before us here, and I hope with some, you know, changes and some real, you know, listening to the community and how that interfaces with Lawton, certainly it sounds like we've made some good progress, but clearly those people who are here, and I'm sure others, feel the same as those citizens, and that's really important, that they are not excluded from this process and the project continues to work with them. But I think we're pretty close, you know, in the grand scheme of things, so, so thank you.
One question I have is, have you looked, where are you with the leases for this building, for the office building? I mean, do you have any, anybody looking at it at this point?
We do, we have at least one tenant who's intending to take a floor, probably a second, intending to take a second floor, and then we are just about to start the process of really marketing it. It was a little early to market it before we kind of got to this point in the process, but we do think there's a lot of interest, but we aren't to the point of having actual tenants, we can say, or sign leases on any of the spaces yet.
Okay, all right. And then, just a quick thought, it just occurred to me. On the issue of massing on Lawton Street to the housing, there's an apartment building that's on, I believe, is Westmoreland and 19th, west, northwest, Westmoreland and 19th. It's, I think it's the street that dead-ends into 29, going towards 666. There's, and at the junction, there's that animal hospital, I think, across from it. Now, when you go, yeah, when you go that street towards the metro, there's an apartment building that sort of ends on the 19th Street, next to a house, actually. Take a look at how the massing was done there, because I think it's, it was done really well. It steps, it steps down and then, you know, ends, and I think there's like 30 feet or something between that building and the, and the house that's sitting there. So take a look at that as an example.
And I have one final comment. When you come back to us in January, I do not need paper drawings. I'd prefer to look at it on electronic copies.
If you do, if you roll them up, it's easier for me to, like, play with my kids with them, because there aren't as many creases.
We are happy to not provide paper copies.
We may require a certain number, you can minus one, for sure.
And actually, I've come up with an idea for usage, you could use it to wrap Christmas presents.
All right, well, thank you for your time.
Thank you very much, we appreciate the feedback.